All right, I'm gonna call the order. Board of Education, December 19th, 7 o'clock's meeting. Secretary, take attendance.
Members are present except for Mark Bank.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. I have one card. Phil?
Hello, my name's Phil Liberty. I teach at the high school and then I'm also the interim president of the Bloomfield Hills Education Association. Teaching at the high school, of course, I was there for the incident today and there's a few words I'd like to say concerning that. Firstly, the speed at which the township PD responded was unbelievable and it really reminded me of how lucky we are to have the fire department and the police department so close. That's a true gift. And then also, the offices and businesses surrounding the high school responded remarkably. The Lifetime Fitness, the Kirk in the Hills, the township offices welcoming our kids in, comforting them, the Kirk in the Hills bringing out food trays for the kids. I mean, it was truly amazing and reminded me of what a great community I teach in, we teach in. Also, the, oh, and finally, the school district staff, the central administrators rushed right over, they're providing logistical support and assisting in any way they could, our building administrators providing leadership and a constant stream of communication, the latest communication that was sent out via email, text, phone calls, keeping everybody in the loop. And then finally, the over 100 members, BHEA members that work at the high school, I'm so proud to represent them. It's truly a privilege and seeing the way that they initiated the emergency protocols today was astounding, the way, the speed at which they got our students out of the building, rushing them to safety, comforting those that were upset, reuniting and helping reunite parents with their children. It was really a sight to see. I'm so proud of them. So despite this being an unfortunate event, the thing that I'm gonna take away from this event is that this is an amazing community to live in, to work in, and that the employees of the Bloomfield Hills School District are truly amazing professionals that, you know, that I'm privileged to work side by side with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone.
President's report. So first thing, I do also wanna comment about today's events, so I have a statement prepared and then some of my colleagues may also have some comments. So today at 11:58, the Blue Point alarm system was sounded at Bloomfield Hills High School. One of our school officers who was in the building responded immediately to the location indicated by Blue Point. Students and staff trained in run, hide, and fight, so some students evacuated while others were locked down. Additional Bloomfield Township Police arrived at 12 o'clock and roughly 60 officers from local and surrounding police departments responded within minutes. First, I wanna thank the first responders who quickly arrived at the high school. First responders were from Oakland County Sheriff, Oakland County Aviation, Berkeley Public Safety, Birmingham Police Department, Royal Oak Police Department, Michigan State Police, Detroit Police, West Bloomfield Police, Bloomfield Hills Department of Public Safety, the FBI, Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team, Auburn Hills Police Department, Troy Police Department, West Bloomfield Fire Department, and Birmingham Fire Department responded within minutes and it was incredible reassuring to know we have this kind of support that we need from our surrounding areas and our local area. On behalf of the board and district, I extend our appreciation for the support provided by our local community partners. The staff at Lifetime Fitness Clergy and Support Staff at Kirk in the Hills, as Phil mentioned, Bloomfield Township Library, Bloomfield Township Campus Staff and other local businesses wrapped around our students and staff today in a way only a true community can. We are grateful to live in a place that cares so deeply about our school family and is ready to spring into action without notice. And additionally, in the audience tonight is our principal of our high school, Charlie Hollerath, our officer, one of our officer liaisons, Corey Donberger, and also one of our APs, David Reed Norwell, along with Phil, who just spoke. We extend our thanks to them also for our amazing leadership. I'll pause to see if any of my other colleagues wanna say a few words.
Well, I don't have anything prepared. I do have two students at the high school and to tell you that the phone call from one of your students that they're evacuating the building is terrifying. The minutes that it takes to know that they're somewhere safe seem like hours. I was around with also two students in the high school a couple years ago when there was a non-incident but where the blue light was activated and I can't tell you how different and how much improved the process was from then to now. The students, I mean, as nervous and upset as they were, and I'm sure many are, were really embraced by the community. Phil spoke a little bit about it. I heard from so many parents today whose students had stories of how welcome they were in all the local businesses and it just, it makes me really proud to be part of a community that embraces our students first, puts everything else aside and drops everything. Also, incredibly proud of our teachers, administrators. We got texts from administration that before we knew, before the building had been swept and we knew, they swept it twice before any communications, I think, went out to parents just to be safe. But before that happened, our administrators went to be on-site. I mean, that's so rushing toward what could be really a dangerous situation. You know, my, I just can't say thanks enough to the people involved and how grateful I am to have people who love our kids and be part of a community that really embraces and cares for our kids.
I just wanna say thank you to everybody here because it was a very emotional day and I'm incredibly, I'm a parent of a high school student, I'm incredibly proud of the teachers, the students themselves, who exercised good judgment. Within a minute, I had phone calls that people were safe, other parents on a group me chat saying, okay, we know this student's here, we know this student's here. Everybody basically did what they knew to do and I'm just, I'm so grateful to everyone. Thank you so much.
I'd just add that I know that our team has been working on developing a very detailed emergency plan for several years and one never hopes to have anything like this ever occur and have something really bad happen, but when there is this kind of event, it does provide the opportunity to see where we can do better. And clearly, I really appreciate all of the efforts to continue to really nail down every piece of the puzzle that needs to be worked on and I'm sure there was more learned today. That's the way life is, but thank you to everybody who's been working on that. It's been a huge effort for several years and obviously, it's really paying off.
I'll just mention that the Blue Point system that was the way we found out about there was, you know, the issue and brought everything to a head, is being implemented in all the different buildings around the district. I think it's gonna be operational by after Christmas time, if I'm right, Brian? Yep. So after Christmas, so beginning in January, every one of our buildings will have the system installed in it.
I have just a few other things besides that, but yes, I mean, it was a tremendous day by our staff, students, everyone who was involved, as we all indicated. Couple other things, just on December 6th, the board voted unanimously to approve the contract for Bloomfield Hills new superintendent, Patrick Watson. We look forward to Pat's official start date, which is gonna be January 6th, and have been working with Pat as he'd been busy not only transitioning from his old job but setting up his 90-day plan for Bloomfield Hills. Pat intends on going to every school, shadowing students in every building and meeting with as many of our staff across the district. Additionally, Pat will be attending PTOs and will be working with his executive assistant, Rebecca, to arrange various community meetings. The community is so excited, it cannot wait until the new year as it's exciting time, you know, for Bloomfield Hills. With that said, I do wanna thank two people who've been a part of our board table while we went through this transition. First, I wanna thank Sherri Hart, who's sitting over there taking the minutes, who works in our athletic department, who again, has been taking the minutes controlling the public comments for the board for the last several years. Sherri, I know I speak on behalf of my colleagues and especially myself, when I say it's been a pleasure, as you've always made these meetings so enjoyable, but as you know, I will continue to see you a lot at our high school athletic events and when I come by, yours offices are the first ones I pass as I come to Doyle. So, thanks again, Sherri. So. And then, I also on the board, wanna thank Tina Kostick, who once again today showed how valuable she is in the role of interim superintendent, and all of our staff across the district, who in addition to Tina, who stepped up while we were searching for a new superintendent, as what was evident today. As many of you know, it takes a village and Tina stepped up and it meant more of a burden on others from across all departments and like we saw today, all departments again stepped up all around the district. So on behalf of the board, I wanna thank, again, say thanks to Tina and everyone else who stepped up, you know, while we were looking for a new superintendent. So thank you very much, Tina.
Thank you.
And then finally, tonight, we'll be doing some additional critical things. We'll be voting on new courses at the high school, a new AP government textbook to be rolled out, voting on officers. And one thing I just wanna make clear, the reason we're voting on our officers now as opposed to when the term is up after the new year, is we wanna have our officers in place when Pat Watson starts a new superintendent on January 6th. And finally, the board will be getting an update from the scope and design committee on a recommendation for a K through 8 reconfiguration. And then finally, we'd like to wish everyone in our community a happy holiday season and we'll see you all after the new year. With that, I'll hand it over to Tina for her final superintendent report.
Thank you. Yes, for a final report, obviously, I have a little bit of an addition given today and "it takes a village" is certainly an understatement, given what we all witnessed today. So I would also like to thank the Bloomfield Hills High School staff who did an outstanding job supporting our students as they evacuated or they locked down. They boarded buses and also reunified with family members. Staff, including those from other buildings, came out and were present and supported the needs of our students throughout the process. We recognize that today's events may have been traumatic for all those involved, especially our students. Counseling staff were available almost immediately, it seemed to me today, and will be available for our students to have any additional level of support that they require tomorrow. The emotions following a traumatic or scary experience can be intense for children and teens, including those that were not at the high school. So thank you to everyone who was involved. Safety and security is a community effort and a community responsibility and I am just grateful that we have such a tremendous community and all the support that we witnessed today. On a positive note, what I thought I was going to say today, and keeping it short, is I did have the opportunity to make a snow day decision quite early in the season and that was an experience and I appreciate having that opportunity. I think the students were happy with the outcome that day. I also take this opportunity to thank all of you, board members, the entire Bloomfield Hills family, for your support and collaboration during my months serving as your interim superintendent. I am excited for the new year and all the future holds for our students. I wish everyone a wonderful, healthy holiday season. Thank you very much.
Consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approved the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve regular meeting minutes of November 20th. Request to approve study session minutes of December 5th. Request to approve Barton Mallow staffing plans. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve attached HR actions. Support?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent passes, general discussion. FFLA, Howard?
Mr. Bank is the chairman of this committee, but he is not here this evening, so I'll be doing the FFLA report. We had a meeting on December 5th. It only had two agenda items. We got an update from Tina on the budget. There have been three things that have happened of significance since we approved the budget in June of 2019. First is that the actuals for the 2018-19 school year, we had the audit results in October and when we had done the forecast or the final budget in June, we had been showing a $1.2 million loss. And as of the actuals, we had basically a break even for the year for 2018-19. So that has, whatever happens in the actual year has ramifications going on into the future. So that will be good news or favorable for the 19-20 school year or the budget that we're working on right now. The second thing is that the student counts were finalized recently. We had forecasted a decrease of students of around 80. We actually had an increase of 53. So the net result of both of those is about 133 difference between what we had forecasted or budgeted and what we actually got. So obviously, that's another piece of favorability. And the third is, as you know, the state budget finally got resolved over the last month or so and that was a very arduous process, but we had forecasted, I believe, $75, yes, a $75 increase and we ended up getting a $125 increase, a $120 increase. So that was also favorable. So we've had three pieces of favorability. Now, Tina has not had a chance to really pull through the entire, all the rest of the detail. She will be doing that by the end of January and I think there will be a budget meeting that, or a mid-year budget review that we'll have at the end of January, so about a month from now. So that was the first item that we went through and the second was the Barton Mallow staffing plan that we just approved in consent. So that was the FFLA meeting that we had at the beginning of December.
Howard, could you just take very few sentences and tell us about the Barton Mallow staffing plan, just 'cause I'm not familiar?
Every year, we have a staffing, there's a certain amount of fixed fees that Barton Mallow charges us for about four or five different staff members that support our buildings, for facilities work that Brian works on for sinking plant, sinking fund and also other, any other repairs and things like that we have in the buildings. And it was about $200,000 and it's pretty consistent with what we've had in the past.
Any other comments? Jackie, BIC report?
Yeah, we had the Board Instruction Committee meeting on December 9th and one of the things on the agenda is this is the time of year when course, new courses and revisions to courses come up through the pipeline in order to get ready for the future. And so, we had several new course proposals that were brought to our attention and one of the first was, is called LINKED and this is peer-to-peer support and so it would be a student in grades nine, 10, 11, or 12. It would be considered a general education elective and the LINKED student will be trained as a peer mentor for another student with special needs and they will accompany that student. And this doesn't mean that they will be actually providing the accommodation, whatever the student's accommodations are, will still be available for them, but this student will actually provide peer mentoring, they will work alongside that student. If it's biology, for example, then they'll be working out the problems in biology, even if they've already taken biology before, but they're gonna be trained as a peer mentor and serve as a type of role model, but also companion to the students with special needs as they are in general education courses. And they work together to promote the socialization and the independence and also the friendship of both students. It's a year-long commitment and, but they can continue that for multiple semesters. They, let's see, the class will appear as links on the transcript and, let's see, it'll be marketed by counselors through brochures and through posters for students that really, who have a passion or really interested in providing that companionship for another student with special needs. And so it's different than LINKED Crew. My daughter was in LINKED Crew and we've had that program, that was not a class, that was a leadership activity. This is actually a class, both students will have class and, but the student who is, who is the actual mentor will be trained for those type of techniques and psychology and additional things where they'll really understand how they are helping to support their peer that has special needs. One of the things we discussed was potentially having some career or internship opportunities or field trips where students who is the mentor could perhaps visit an institution or shadow a teacher or something like that, where they actually can understand how this could fit into a future career in some fashion. Another course is the IB, there's several that are in the IB diploma program, one of which is theater and this would be an English and Performing Arts credit for grades 11 and 12. Another one is the Advanced Theater Design and Technology, which sounds fantastic, grades 10, 11, and 12. So this is actually the technology of the theater, which I know somebody who's really into that and it's a really cool, it's so fun to have, understand all the technology and the lighting and everything and how that really enhances the art of the theater. Another one is jazz improvisation, performing arts, and that's for grades nine, 10, 11, and 12 in music. There's also AP music theater, sorry, AP music theory, also part of performing arts, grade 10, 11, and 12. That sounds really interesting. I had, you know, I didn't have theory actually in class, I had it through piano lessons, but it's great that we're bringing this into our courses in the high school. Another one is guitar and ukulele. This is, I know from being on the foundation, is that ukulele is really coming up there, you know, like there's grants that are for students before high school where they're learning to play the ukulele and so that's another way for students, I mean, guitar and ukulele, just like piano, are lifelong musical instruments, you know, you can play that, as opposed to sometimes with some band instruments, that is not the case. There's also robotics 1 and 2. This is part of business and tech, grades 10, 11, and 12, and we also will be offering CTE credit for that. There's another one, Pathways, and Pathways is for biomed and media arts, which again, fantastic, when we are integrating biomedical technology and science with the arts. I mean, just think of how interesting that would be for students. That's grade 11 and 12. They get credit for science and English and social studies. Okay, so those are the new courses. We went in pretty, we took quite a long time to discuss through all the details of this, but you can see that these sound very interesting and how they're really fitting with our philosophy. Now, there were several, as there are, course revisions. Oftentimes, course revisions are a change of title in order to align with standards or it could be the course description is also tweaked, so it doesn't mean the course itself has any large changes. Oftentimes, it's just tweaking of either the title or the course description. And so, one of which is the Lifetime Individual Sports and it's going to be called now Lifetime Sports and Fitness. There's AP Art, it's gonna be called AP Art and Design. AP World History will now be called AP World History Modern and we're going to combine and link Adventure English with Global Studies. I love Adventure English, my daughter took that fascinating class. So that's what, that has to do with our new courses and the revisions. And again, this is a standard part of what BIC works with at least once a year in order to update the catalog, to add new courses and revise the information in the catalog. Question?
Yes, I have a question. I just, with the Pathways, I, just to clarify, I thought that the biomedical and the media arts were two different pathways or is it one integrated pathway?
We'll make a presentation with.
Okay. Yeah, do you wanna mention that, Todd? About the biomed and the tech?
Pathways.
The Pathways? Or you wanna wait until you have your presentation?
Yeah, I think as we go through, we'll be able to dig into a couple of those and are you ready for us to start it?
Nope, nope. I have several more things for Board Instruction Committee.
We're working on perfectly.
Okay, we'll get to your question in a minute. I'll go through. Now, the other thing, as you know, part of what BIC does and it's brought to the board table eventually, is that we look at different types of resources. We have, resources can be textbooks, they can also be online programs or any other type of resource that may be needed for a certain course. You've seen in the past, we've been working with the elementary schools and the middle school recently on the math and the math resources. Well, this one is high school and it's AP government resource. And this is, we actually, there is a list of approved resources, I think there are about 10 of them. If I, we're gonna have the presentation on it, but there are quite a few. We've had the same resource, I believe they said 11 years. And so, okay, I'm right. So 11 years, we've had the same resource and it was just time to make sure that with all the changes that's been happening, that we have the best resource for our students for this class. And so there were two, oh, it does say 11 years here. Okay, so there were two, the current text is called American Government Institutions and Policy by Wilson, 11th Edition, 2008. So you can see 2008, it is now 2019, that is 11 years old. So the proposed text will narrow down to two different potential texts and there, this was, there was, we had a lead, but we also had a group of faculty that were working together on that. So they narrowed down, in the process, they narrowed it down to two different texts. American Government Stories of a Nation by Abernathy, 2019, or American Politics Today, AP Edition, Bianco and Cannon, 2018. And, let's see, those are the two. I don't have here listed which one we actually chose. Which is the one we chose?
Stories.
Okay, so we chose, that's right. So the, so one that after going, we actually had two classes and they were using, each one had a different text, but they could talk and they could, and so the, after trying out out the text, they did choose American Government Stories of a Nation by Abernathy, two thousand nineteen. Now, we're going to be asked to approve this. The cost is twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-six dents. This includes six years of online access, two hundred printed student editions, and three teacher editions. So if you can see that for eleven years, we've been using the same text and now we're going to an updated text, I feel like, and in our discussion, this was a very reasonable cost for updating this resource. I saw some questions about it, whether or not that it was aligned with the current social study standards, and it is indeed aligned to the social study standards, the new social study standards. So this is really bringing a brand new, and with the online edition, you know, you can imagine between two thousand eight to two thousand nineteen, the electronic access for students and all the different things that they can learn and, and the videos and really things come to life, a lot of times through these online resources. So that's really, I think, going to be exciting and we're going to hear more about it in the future in this presentation coming up. Now, we also talked about the health curriculum update and any recommendations about Prepare You by Schultz and Scott. And, and so basically, we had someone come and if you recall, we were so excited about Prepare You. It helps our students learn about their mental health and from the whole full spectrum. And, and so we have been very proud to be piloting this. All students are, are taking it, but we're calling it a pilot. And so we just were getting some feedback. This will be the first feedback we had on our students. And in general, there's been very positive student feedback, especially with the group circles. The students are really, right, at this point, they're driving the conversation. And one of the areas of growth the instructor really saw is in the, in empathy, in student empathy. So at the beginning, she wasn't observing, you know, teacher observation is, is really a training that they have, and she wasn't seeing that empathy as much as the growth in just a few months, that the students really have grown in their empathy level. And I asked her, I'd like to, if she could quantify it, so I actually have the numbers here. So she, she felt that it creased from probably about a two to three in September when they started to now she feels a level of empathy about a six to a seven. So that's significant growth in our students' empathy for their peers and for mental health maintenance and challenges. And, and now students are really freely talking about their feelings. And an update on the home edition will be done at the end of the semester. So I think that we, as a board, were feeling very positive about Prepare You. And I think that this update is really helping us see that it's, the trajectory is pretty much, I think, what we would expect to see with such a great program. And the final thing that we talked about, and this was quite a long, I think, yeah, this is all about the farm. Okay, so as you know, we have done a strategic plan for the Combined Farm and Nature Center. And it was quite detailed. There were many people involved from the community, educators, parents. And so we really spent so much time thinking about the farm and nature center and really thinking about, we have this great facility, these great facilities, and how can we really integrate that to make it an integral part of our curricula? But also, another aspect was how can we also provide more community integration as well? And so Alan provided us with some recap of the background of the farm. And it's pretty cool. It was open in nineteen sixties, ninety-three acres of forest and fields, eleven hundred and forty pounds of produce donated to Open Door Pantry, seventy-nine plots in the community garden. So it's a happening place there. And so what does the community really want? So one of the things that they were looking at, is not only the, the strategic planning, but what are the key takeaway? And the community would like to have casual access to the farm, expanded hands-on learning, and opportunities for private and community events. So we're currently in the design phase as far as how that would happen. We've really been working at integrated student voice in order to understand what our students would, not only their experiences, because really our students, for some time, even since when my kids have been there, we, you know, it's, it went first where we had to put in field trip forms every time they would go to the farm or nature center to, at the beginning of the year, you put one in and they just let you know that the kids are going. So it's becoming a lot more integrated, even throughout my kids who are all graduated now. And so we're, we, we don't really have any specific outcomes yet, but the process is well underway and it's very exciting to see just the changes that have been happening during my, you know, going on ten years on the board of how we've really been integrating the farm and nature center into our curriculum and seeing how can really, we can leverage everything that these auxiliary buildings really provide to our education. Does anyone else want to add anything? You were there, you were there. Anybody else?
I, was the
Paul was there.
Was this strategic plan done before or after Alan took over director, the director position?
Alan was a part of this. He was already the director, yeah.
He had just started.
Yeah.
And I, I think he was part of MSU at that time.
Well, he was working for both. He was both our point and their point, right? Yeah, go ahead, Tina.
This, this was part of, part of his goal was to actually be part of the strategic plan along with Dan at the nature center.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to note, I've seen from last year, this, since Aileen took over as the Bowers Academy Principal, the, the integration that you're talking about is so much more clear to me. I mean, I, I thought of Bowers Academy for years as just the academy that was located at the farm, but now it, it's really part of their curriculum. You can see that they use the location. It, it's, I, I mean, just in that one year, huge. Also, the summer camp programs are outstanding. They even have accommodations for students, some students with special needs, and they fill up really fast. They can't, you know, they can't even accommodate all their requests for summer camp. So there is some really exciting things going on that I've seen.
Yeah, and in this, he actually went over some of the design of how to relocate because of exactly that, like locating parts of the farm into areas where it would really be much more beneficial for the activities that we want to hold there, the learning activities, but also for the animals. For example, we have that beautiful red barn, but it has a cement floor. Well, we were talking about the fact, our veterinarian over here, is that, that it's really not a good way, you should, animals shouldn't be on cement floor. It can really cause
Foot rot.
So one of the things is
Technical term.
Technical. She's a veterinarian. So one of the things is
I wasn't large animal.
But she knows this. And so locating the animals in a better, a barn that is better situated for them and then using the red barn for other activities, more learning activities, locating the horses and the small animals, and also the parking, relook, you know, working with the parking to make it easier for people who come. So, and also Alan mentioned that to really bring some of the crops right up front because most of agriculture really is, are about crops, not really necessarily about animals. And so he really went into and explained this to us in detail, which was very helpful and, and to see really how, how it's his expertise, right?
I'm wondering if we could put a link maybe to, to the Farm and Nature Center Strategic Plan booklet that you're holding up? I don't know if we can find it on the web, or maybe it's not, maybe it's, it already is and we can just, because I love those sketches, the vision that, that they have at the farm is really
There's a legend here, the legend that talks about the different things.
It's, it's gra, you know, it's grassing over a lot of the concrete and gravel to make more accessible space, integrating, they do a really nice job. The Historical Society has, you know, moved the farmhouse there and they had ideas of like hosting teas for, you know, like tea parties for students and, you know, integrating more community with, you know, maybe the younger students and parents accompanying them. I mean, just in building the art, I mean, the space is there, but just sort of modifying it, grass, you know, to be able to accommodate some of these ideas, but it's, it's really exciting. It's hard not to smile and get all caught up in the excitement when you see those renderings too.
Yeah, and one of the things he was mentioning is some sustainable practices, for example, a grass roof on some of the buildings and really showcase some of those type of environmentally sound practices there and the students could actually go and discover them and understand how they work together. So, and you know, the new activities that we've been having, you know, that's, that's really, it was so many people came to the Fall Fest this year. We had an After Hours Fall Fest, the winter guard, the winter
Winter Park.
Park, thank you. The Winter Park, that was so fun. And so all the great activities, right? It was so exciting. It's so fun to be there, but it's really having a place for people to come out and explore the farm.
So I, I just want to add that the, the strategic plan is very comprehensive and exciting, as everybody said. It is also an integral part of the scope and design work. So when we talk about that in a few minutes, I just like to share with the community that this is real, this all integrated into this work and will be a key component as we talk about expanding community engagement.
So we had actually quite an extended BIC meeting and people got to work a little late, but it was so exciting and because there was so much great stuff that, not surprisingly, coming from our educators. And that's my report.
Just wanted to comment on the, the strategic plan for the farm. I just looked on the website real quick, both under the farm itself and strategic plan page, and I didn't see the, the farm and nature center strategic plan.
To write down the decisions now, but we will certainly
We could add that easily.
We will look into that.
And the second is, if you remember our interview with Mr. Watson, he had a number of things very favorable to say about the farm a few times during his interview, so
He was very excited, yes.
I think the farm is going to get a little bit more attention going to the future.
Well, I also want to say, the things that some of the brainstorm ideas were, one that I loved, the farm-to-table pop-up restaurant in that, you know, Winter Park Lower, I mean, just some really creative and fun ideas, so I can't, I really can't wait.
We're so, we're really so fortunate to have these two wonderful places for our students.
Very good. With that, we'll lead into something, we talked about the BHS course offerings for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one year additions and revisions.
Yes, thank you, Jackie, for that beautiful update. If you didn't get a chance to read last week's weekly board update, Jackie just saved you a lot of time. Somehow we did fit that into just a few hours where we covered everything from Bowers to social emotional wellness to
In detail.
textbook adoptions and even we found room for foot rot or hoof rot.
Rodic laminitis.
Yes, thank you, the technical term. So we covered everything in BIC, nothing is off limits. And there were a couple of things that needed to come.
We, we are learners at every level.
Every level. And so there were a couple of items that needed to move out of BIC and come in front of the board tonight for your approval. So there are a couple of things that we're seeking approval on. And I, just as a side note, Lisa, thank you for bringing up Bowers Academy as well. That's something we are extremely proud of and that's coming up shortly on a BIC. We think we've made a lot of progress. We are incredibly proud of our staff and students out at Bowers Academy. And it's just been a labor of love to, to watch that program grow and grow so quickly. So there will be a couple of great conversations coming up and update, and then we'll be in the position to maybe make some more alterations and choices that might be able to propel that program even further than we've already gone in such a short time. So we're real excited about that. But tonight, we need your help on two specific items. So we have David Reed Norwalk here first to talk about our course descriptions. We're really, it's that time of year, our normal course of business where we need to approve some course offerings for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year at the high school. And some of these are going to be linked, you'll see later on, as we get a little bit further into spring and we start folding back some of the pathways development, you'll see that some of this is kind of front-loading that work a little bit. So with that, I'll let David come up and add on a little bit to what Jackie has already explained to us, to kind of go over the course offerings and we have some revisions and additions. And hopefully we'll have your approval tonight for these. So we're real excited. David?
Thank you. We wanted to speak a little bit to some of the work of the staff and I think this tonight among, or maybe more than any night, shows just how phenomenal our staff is from really working hard at the point to be there for the kids, protecting and ensuring their safety. Then they also are going to be there ensuring their minds can grow and be pushed. And that's kind of the scope of a normal day for these teachers and that's something that I think has caused us to be somber. We, we would like to spend even more time on these incredible course offerings. Thank you, everybody, though, for your support and for the things that we've been able to do with the staff. That's, I'm saying this because this work you see here is really representative of the amazing work of the staff. I'm speaking on their behalf because that's where our courses come from. They come from a lot of the feedback from the community, from the professional areas that the students are going to go into, college ambitions, as, and then it's put together with a lot of feedback to help design these offerings. There's been a lot of work that the staff has put in to even get to the point where they're going to propose some of these courses. You're also going to see an alignment further, a testament to the work of Tina and then all the other teams coming through, have a guiding vision that's going to really help to see in alignment with the work we're doing. Things that are going to be around, like the Prepare You, social emotional health, empathy, cohesion, leadership, and also progressions within courses. And that's kind of a overall vision and, and way to kind of, I would say, encapsulate what you're going to see in the course offerings this year. And as we plan to continue moving forward, always that we're going to have that work put into it, so we have real intentional and aligned courses to present. So here, when you see, one of the first things we want to talk about is this linked peer-to-peer support. And a linked program is really about aligning special ed students with general ed students and having something where they can work together, develop relationships, spend time together. And it is a national known program and it has tremendous results around empathy, relationships across the building. And so it's going to have linked students trained to be a peer mentor who will work alongside with those special ed students, developing relationships and working together. They'll have a standard curriculum, we'll have a guiding teacher, and we'll have work that those students will do together. Want me to just keep walking through each one as we go? The next one we're looking at, we have a tremendous robotics program through the club and we know that it is time to bring some of those robotics programs into the curriculum for the students to have within the school day. This is also representing that progression, a one and two. We had some mentioning earlier about CTE possibilities. The robotics fits very nicely with CT as we look at future funding. And one of the objectives is to have applied engineering, mathematics, concepts for the students to be doing within the curriculum. So we see a lot of opportunities as we keep growing within mathematics and other programs. Courses to introduce students to basic programming, creative problem solving. And they have a robotics too. It's a semester course. We always want to see that we have a progression as they move forward for that one too, so that kids can keep moving forward. Something else we mentioned, I think the answer to the one of the questions we had is about the pathways. We've been doing a lot of work around the eleventh and twelfth grade pathways. The Agriculture Science Natural Resources is already a pathway that is functioning at, at the Bowers Farm. And we're introducing two more pathways to be coming in the fall, one in biomedical sciences and health sciences, and another one in the media arts. And as they're coming through, we're doing a lot of work with the students and the staff to be able to have more specifics to the actual course design. And that's where they're working to have those actually out and marketed to be presented and scheduled for the students this fall, representing nearly seven years worth of work to pull these pathways together. It's really exciting stuff. And then some other ones that we have kind of in an outline here, uh, we have IB diploma program, speaking of more arts offerings in the ID, IB program, advanced theater design and technology, um, in order to have a progression in our performing arts. We also have some, a lot of interest in, um, developing some more electives within music, like guitar and ukulele, which, um, we'll see the course description is quite fascinating. Kind of bringing in the, the, the importance of guitar in our modern music, jazz improvisation. Um, and people saw, for instance, through our collage, collage concert, we have a strong jazz presence and a lot of other, uh, courses that are sometimes in the, outside of the course curriculum. We would like that in there. And then some of the revisions we spoke to, these are name changes. Uh, not much of the curriculum is changing. We'll have updates, but most of this is the same curriculum with some updates to the names, um, and kind of the way that we put them together. I think another thing that Jackie mentioned was just the combination of English and global studies. Those courses both exist, linking them together. It makes sense to put those two together and they also work nicely within the, um, social emotional learning. And this year we didn't actually have any course deletions because I think the team did a really nice job last year of getting some of those erroneous classes out or the extraneous classes out.
Any questions, comments? Howard?
Um, a few things. Um, on the link program, you, I think your explanation helped a little bit. It's, I was wondering the, the motivation of the, the generation of that class. And you're saying, I was thinking possibly it was coming from the students, but you're saying it's, it's coming from a national program and we're adopting the concept.
The links program is a national program and it's, it really, the genesis is from our students. We have a, uh, when, anytime you walk through BHHS, you're going to see incredible, um, relationships between a lot of our students, uh, and the general population, special ed population. This is a more formalized process where you have a course with a curriculum and where we, we, we make it easier for these students to have relationships. A lot of times you'll see these kind of things through a club or through a lunch, and we want something more intentional. So it has a national curriculum, national focus, and tremendous results around empathy. Students have been asking for it, but also through our staff and our special ed staff know the power of this program. We had some, um, administrators and teachers who just went to a conference on it to help implement it. So it's very well established and it's a really powerful program. And we've had great findings on empathy across the board, uh, just all students raising empathy and awareness and access to students of all.
So it just isn't a course for, uh, students who are looking to go into special education in the future, but it's really empathy across the board.
Right. It has all those purposes. It works very well. We've had, we've also had a lot of findings of students who come out of this and like, you know what? I'm really thinking that special education would be my field. So it fits with those ones who may have an idea. But yes, it's also just about the experience in those students to grow and their understanding of all learners.
Um, on the robotics, I see it's for 10th through 12th. Obviously, we have a very robust robotics program through first. Um, was there a thought, or is there a thought in the future maybe of having something for the middle schoolers?
Well, that, yeah, that's definitely our plan. You're going to see something too, because a part of our pathway part, when you saw the biomed and the media arts is to look at in one to two years out, be careful about it, but look at pathways that are in the robotics STEM, um, business that, because right now there are technology and our business are kind of wrapped together. You're going to see things come out in business. And one of the main, uh, questions about that is how do we capture that as more of a pathway where it's, and not just a high school pathway, but starting at the middle school. And that's some of the things that you're going to see us needing to do, um, in order to have these pathways understood by students is have a very clear, um, conversation and it's, like, communication with the middle schools. We're going, you're going to see a kind of an articulation of options for students. When you look at the course selection book right now, it's not always clear that I could concentrate in these classes and therefore end up with this kind of focus. And that's going to be some other updates we're making to that course selection book, um, to have those sort of paths align more. And you really want the students as eighth graders to see them as options. One of the things that we do beautifully in this district is we don't make tracks that you have to stay in, but we, we want to give them options and identify ways to pursue passion. And in that, have some experiences and bring students in ideally, yes, at the much younger ages. And we see it would be ideal to have a lot of the high school students working with and mentoring.
And that's tapping in first already.
All the way through. I mean, we do, again, we do it very naturally, but we want to do it in more intentionally through our curriculum and have those courses be able to meet at times where students from all grade levels could work together.
I have some others, but I'll let, go to other people first.
No, I mean, the only comment I had and probably Jackie, um, may have shared this in her update is for link, I think it's a selection process for, um, so there's, it's, I wouldn't say an application process, but people are applying and, um, I know members, David, of your building will be looking at and selecting and making sure it's the right fit. Um, so and that'll be going on in January, you know, obviously, you know, prior to, um, the decision being made. So I know that's going to happen as well. So.
Right. Leadership programs, you're very intentional about making those matches. And you want to make sure that the students who are the mentors are trained and they're prepared for it. And that you're making good fits for both students.
Yep, yep. Unless, anyone else?
Well, I just, my, my question is, uh, I, I can kind of see it in the, in the, uh, these are really different course, just courses than we've offered before. So I can sort of see, um, student and teacher input where it is, but maybe you can point out, uh, particularly students, what were some of the things they were asking for? What things are they still asking for that we haven't been able to do yet, but are working toward being able to offer?
Right. Um, pretty much everything you've heard me speak to, a lot of that comes from the conversations with students. For instance, they, uh, when they come to the scheduling process, uh, they, they aren't always kind of seeing a clear way to do it. We have some cards that aren't always clear, the book not always clear, it's very dense. And then where are my recommendations coming from? And often they will say, well, I talk with my buddies about what to do. It's great to know what common peers like, but that isn't necessarily a very intentional, careful process. They've said that to us. They're like, well, we'd like a better way to know what we could look at and how we could know more about courses, but it also needs to be kid-friendly. I mean, we, sometimes when you look at the language and the approach to this, um, it's hard to say that a student's really going to read, even this, is, is a student going to read this program and really understand what it means? A lot of the times we have it for colleges and also for our parents when they're moving to communities. So that lends of the, the students we're bringing in more and more. So one of the things we've been doing is we've talked about links or for instance, the pathways. All pathway teams have met with panels of students and they've taken students that they know are interested. For instance, the biomed has a really robust club. We had students from the biomedical club meet and work with the teachers and they sat down with them and they asked those questions, what would you like? What are you interested? What do you need? And the first they said is, this is incredible, being a part of it and being able to give our input. It is a really unique process for teachers before something even comes to say, what are you interested in? And then to take that as a part of the design. And then the students often said the things we know and that a lot of the work has come from our, our, our other conversations. Liked it to be real world. I'd like to be able to apply. I would like to know, am I ready for this thing after high school? They don't always want to have to be locked into a profession, but they would like to know what the profession is. They'd like choice. They'd like to be, um, something where they're really engaged. And those you're also going to see in these programs and links is a great example. I mean, it's, you don't get much more real world than developing relationships with other students, spending time with them and mentoring and helping them also develop their skills. Or the biomedical, how, how incredible would it be to work next to professionals in the field, shadow a doctor? We have a vet program right now where you actually get to be with vets, learning side by side with them and developing kind of solutions. When you are able to ask the students about that, that really gets them excited. In addition to, and another thing they say is please don't also though neglect the incredible programming we have. They, they really have voiced repeatedly, are so grateful for the program we have in our APs and our IBs and our learning communities. And that's also one of the first things they say is, well, you're not getting rid of this stuff, are you? And say, no, we're trying to be intentional about what we're doing and continue progressing and keep growing on what's already strong. So that's, that's something else I want to point out is the students are very appreciative of what we've established, how, how much work the teachers have put into our existing programming and to build on what we have and, and not wipe it out. Because it's been interesting every once we're like, whoa, are you getting rid of all our stuff? Like, no, 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 we just want to keep moving and keep building.
And also just to, just to add on that, so I, I think if you look at a, a couple of the course offerings, so students have requested over the last, let's say, couple of years, like for instance, the robotics course, like they don't necessarily want to be in the robotics team, but they've asked for, is there a course? So I think you're meeting that need. And then, you know, obviously people are interested in theater, but not every student wants to be in the play. So how can we learn as opposed to being in the play? So as you could see, a lot of the courses, you know, there's an additional-
I do see that. I do. I can see from the offerings that there's definitely, uh, you know, a, a different perspective coming in. That's nice to see.
Right. And, and that, and having that lens of, so I'm not just in it, but I'm also, you're going to see a lot, the, when I say the advanced, the advanced is a program where the kids are contributing at an even higher level to the course itself. And they've, they've spent a year or a semester in a course and now they know a lot about it. So then you're going to see kids who are maybe project managers or directors or scripting something and trying to produce it. And that's been part of those conversations as we've worked through it, you're going to see advanced or even acting one, two, and three. It's after acting three, I'm in a different place. I know these things. And the teachers really want to be able to push them to a point of now they might be providing feedback to other students and helping that. This allows that to be a natural part of the progression of the course. And it's, it's just embedded in all our conversations.
And thank you for maintaining the flexibility. I, I have had two graduate already from the high school and that was always there. And, uh, we really did, um, always appreciate that. The flexibility to be able to sort of change courses and, you know, if you, if you were on a math track that didn't work, it was really easy to be able to fix and, and, uh, you know, take a different tactic, that's what worked best for you. So, um, I, I, I'm happy to see the flexibility still maintained.
I think one thing that's interesting looking at the new course offerings, just something that happened recently at the high school. So you see advanced theater design technology, IB diploma. So there was just this past weekend, um, the, some of our students went to the thespian, um, festival.
Right.
Where four of our students alone were awarded close to a million dollars of scholarship money. And it's really based on, if you look at advanced theater design and technology, you know, and then I think, you know, it was, it was kind of split, like half a million was the tech side, half a million was the acting side. So there's a lot of opportunities, which I think we've heard at the high school and now that's why that's one of the pathways. We have some of these advanced courses where students can, can really significantly get a lot of opportunities in this area that many people are not aware of.
Right. And they're not, they're not always thinking about, but we haven't, in, like, to the choices, I mean, I, I often talk about, I was like, I can't even imagine when I was going through school to be as involved as our students are. I mean, 30% of our entire school was on stage last night for that collage concert. And that's also, we had to schedule around because a lot of those kids are athletes and a lot of them are in other clubs and a lot of them are in a full schedule of APs and IBs. And like that, it's, that flexibility, while not always the easiest thing to maintain, is really providing some incredibly well-rounded and, and, and just experienced students. They have so many things that they're getting. So it's very nice. They need our help however organizing it and helping it build towards something. And also as we keep moving, to be able to have it evolve forward for us. And that's what you will see out of the things like the theater and the performing arts. They're positioned very nicely to, when and if the time comes, it becomes a performing arts. I mean, we're, 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 um, we're performing with the DSO. I mean, what, that we're already there. Let's make that a course that helps the students do that more regularly and help our staff be able to do that more regularly. Let's get the structure around it. So our teachers aren't on top of teaching the kids and performing with them. Also making the phone calls and doing all the work to set up the relationships. We can do that for them. Let's make this really happen for our kids and for our teachers. They're doing this. And these are some of the first steps toward making it, um, making it really efficient and effective for them. And really kind of, um, I would say allowing it to happen. And it's so exciting. Todd and I were just talking, this is, it's happening right now. And it's happening even more so at a very dynamic level starting next year. And it's a really exciting time.
Like you said, they're actually performing tonight at the DSO.
Right.
And they actually just went, um, you know, our choir group performed at the governor's mansion last week. So, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities going on.
It's happening all the time. Let's, 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 let's help support it even more. And that's, we're so grateful for your support in doing this.
Um, so a little bit further on the, the pathways, uh, for the biomed and the media arts, are these our first forays into the pathway, the, the learning community, 11th to 12th learning community evolution from where we were in 2004, 14 when we opened the high school?
I, there, I would say no, because we have the vet and natural, uh, we have an agricultural natural resources already running. It's in its third year. So the concept of a pathway, a pathway is about a integration of professional studies, collegiate studies, and high school academic studies. Where you are in a, in a really fluid space. It feels very uniquely that field. For instance, when you walk to our current vet science pathways, you feel like you're in a vet science. You feel like you're surrounded by animals. You have doctors walking in and out. Kids will often be in their scrubs. So that essence is already existing. We've been doing it for three years. These are just the next evolution of it where we can start bringing it more into the building and use some of our resources. So, uh, we've been doing it. And now we're just, we're growing it.
So my, my question relates to really understanding more in terms of how this changes what our learning communities were to where we're going in terms of integrating with O-Tech, um, you know, seeing exactly who the industry, uh, partners we have.
Right.
Um, because we can possibly advertise that and talk more to the public, saying that we're just not, you know, after kids graduates, we throw them over the wall into either community college or four-year college, uh, but really they're, they're part of it in 11th to 12th grade. And also, um, uh, dollars in terms of, you know, CTE normally is, you know, more expensive than regular high school. So, you know, are there any budget implications and also possible grant opportunities with the Marshall Plan? Um, and have we investigated that, which is a, a program that Governor Snyder incorporated or, uh, uh, put forward about two or a couple of years ago?
Yeah, the answer to all those, yes. I mean, yes.
I would love to learn more about that. If you could maybe do a separate presentation about exactly what pathways are and how it changes from where we were, you know, you know, so we had 2014 where basically, uh, learning communities were ninth and 10th. Now we've added a few others, you know, ancillary, you know, like veterinary science. But now we're really going full steam, um, you know, pulling, um, a model into a, a pathway, all these things. It really is an, an evolution where we're going. And we would love to, uh, understand not just the, the coursework implications, but all the other pieces that go along with it.
Yeah, you'll see that. We're putting out years, putting those together, the board updates, we have separate presentations on this. There's a lot of work behind it. And, um, part of our job is to make evident the work behind it, which is tons, tons of work, really cool stuff. Lot of, um, members of the community coming together and a lot of things that are there to help with that.
Are, as we're going through, starting the budget, are there any budgetary implications? Does it cost more money to do these programs or it's a normal class?
Um, the, I, I'm not actually prepared to answer that, but I, I know that we will be able to get programming in that we will be more, more than you've ever believed an absolute bang for the current bucks we're already spending.
Well, that's not the issue. It's just whatever.
Yeah, and I just want to mention that we've actually, if I, I was just looking it up, we've actually already scheduled this for Board of Education study sessions. So this one is study, you know, so many of the things are actually, and actually I'm reading, this is in the reply to, uh, the, um,
Social Studies.
The follow-up, yeah. And what else was on the upcoming, um, study session? So it's in, it's in your email.
Yeah, we'll, we'll cover it as subsequent.
We'll cover it.
Thank you. That was very comprehensive. Um, any other questions?
I'll make the motion. I move that the BHHS course offerings for 2020, 2021 additions and revisions be approved as presented.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Um, thank you very much. And thank you David for being, and also being here presenting after obviously everything that went on in the high school.
Yeah, exhausting day.
We can't thank you enough for your support. And for your kind words to start, we greatly appreciate. So thank you. And thank you for your support with the coursework too. Um, it's a really exciting time. We got incredible stuff coming out. So.
So exciting.
Thank you David.
I'll lecture if you buy me lunch.
What's that term?
That's an even thing.
What's the technical term again?
A student can shadow you too.
Yeah, I'll be shadowed.
AP government textbook adoption.
Yeah, and I would just like to reiterate, uh, a thank you to, uh, David and the entire, uh, high school staff and administration. I got to watch David in action today. Uh, there was a command post outside the high school as, as well as inside the high school. David set up shop in the command post inside the high school and he did an exceptional job. More than likely, he started his day probably around 5:00 AM, maybe 6:00 AM, uh, this morning. And, uh, through, um, um, quite a bit of work today, including crisis management. He's here today to present, uh, course offerings and, uh, so he's done an incredible job. Uh, up next we have Christian Vigier to, uh, she is our social studies teacher leader, because another project ongoing has been a, um, a review of our resources in AP government class. And so she's here today to kind of give you an update. And also we're seeking approval for the textbook adoption to move this forward along too. So if things go well, we're hoping to make a purchase. I think we have that slated perhaps, uh, before we go on break so that we can get this in the hands of our students, uh, in January. So, ready? Alright, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me and thank you for your support, um, so far. So I'll share a little bit about our reasoning, um, for why we're looking at a new primary text for our AP government and politics classes. Um, so the first, the first- So the first, the first reason is AP, and the College Board, they review and they redesign courses, and so AP Gov was just redesigned just recently over the summer. And so they're looking to support the C three framework. They're also including the new Michigan Department of Education social studies standards. They wanted to make sure that they include specific foundational documents and Supreme Court cases to best prepare students for the course as well as the exam. Our current text, like mentioned earlier, is eleven years old, and I know our teachers were waiting on this redesign so that when we chose a text, it would support and run parallel with any changes that were made. Is it a PDF? Okay, so I just slide. Our process from the get-go with Kathleen Small and Karen Toomey, who are the two teachers who teach the course, they wanted to make sure that student input was incorporated, that it was a democratic process, and that students were really involved in whatever decisions were made and offered input all along the way. Our timeline started in around May of last year, and so I reached out to districts in Oakland County to see what they were using, where they were at in their process. Our two AP government teachers attended an institute in July to also best prepare themselves for teaching the newly redesigned course, as well as to gather information on what texts are up and coming and what other teachers had, other teachers, what their input was on those texts. In September and October, we collaboratively designed rubrics so that we could look at and evaluate the resources for staff as well as students. And so after that was done, the teachers decided that if we're gonna look at two different texts, that they want to make sure that they've lived in it and that students have experienced both. So they taught the first unit out of one text, and then the second unit out of, using the other text, so that they were able to look at all aspects of the text and the online and digital resources. So along the way, we collected evidence from both staff and students. And then just recently, in December, we analyzed the data, looked at feedback evidence, and then prepared our recommendation for BIC as well as the board. Things that we looked at in our rubric design for teachers, we felt were most important and overlap a resource review that we're doing with six eight as well. So looking for multiple perspectives, a variety of text embedded in the resource, disciplinary literacy at the forefront, differentiation, their ability to support the creation of assessments, and then technology and resources, and then overall evaluation. What students were asked are listed up there. Do you feel like you understood what you read? Did you find the text and graphics to be engaging? Were the materials appropriate to meet your needs as a learner? They were really insightful. Some were comical responses for was there anything that you feel it lacked or anything, any other thoughts? But it was also just extremely insightful, like I just previously mentioned, a lot of really good input, and they're the end user, and so we want to make sure that we are valuing their input in our decision. So our recommendation is American Government Stories of a Nation. It's direct in the delivery of its content. It incorporates required primary sources and Supreme Court cases. Chapter summaries and vocab tools were very useful for students. And then overall, when they were asked, the majority preferred American Government Stories of a Nation. The copyright of this is two thousand nineteen, and it was recommended in various professional groups as well as at the AP Institute. And I continued after BIC to gather additional information. And so I know Birmingham, the text that they use is five years old. Ferndale, the text that they use is six years old. Lambfears is only two. Rochester, they aren't in a position to purchase, and the text that they're using is several years old as well. And so being in a position to purchase and having student input, having teacher input, and really also, I should mention, that students, although they like the online and the digital access, they really preferred the physical text in their possession, because there is quite a bit of reading, and so I think that helps with that. So here, it's in small print, but overall, the total, as stated earlier, so it works out to roughly about twenty-four dollars per student per year. If you look at the cost versus the printed student edition, the launchpad each separately, and then the bundle of print and launchpad, it's a much better rate to do it that way.
Any questions? Comments for a make motion?
I'd just like to ask a little bit more. If you can talk about the virtual print versus launchpad, is launchpad like the iPad version?
It's a digital, yep, it's a digital.
So it's just interesting, and basically going into two thousand twenty, people are still preferring the hard copy? Interesting.
Yes. When reading, when reading a large amount of text, it tends to be easier, and I know some of the students borrow the book, but then end up keeping it as their own, so they can annotate and do different things to the text.
So we're, we're gonna be buying both the print and the launchpad?
Yes, they're in the bundle, yep, one forty-five.
So does the launchpad update more frequently, because obviously, it's virtual and can be changed?
That's a great question. It's something I'd have to look into. I know that it's updated with different features. The content, I think they try to mirror the text so that if a student is using the digital ebook as well as the printed textbook, they mirror. So they update probably features, but, and I'll look into that, and probably court cases if there's other things. And as time goes on.
Because digital not only is a lot, it's easier on your back, in your backpack, but also, you've got drill-down capabilities, so you can actually see the cases or see whatever, you know, background material is there, you know, with a click, and also can be updated so that as things evolve in, definitely in government.
Well, we're getting that, too. You said we're getting six years of online access and two hundred printed student editions and three teacher editions. It's just in the bundle, it's more cost-effective than taking any of those separately. So we are gonna have online access for us.
And then with the, with the online access, then the students can get, I've had a couple go through AP government and, let me say, blown away, amazed by the fact that they're briefing cases that I read when I was in law school and doing it really well, but to be able to have access to that over the summer before the court, you know, so that they don't have to wait till school starts to pick up their textbook was really helpful. They could sort of get a jumpstart on the instruction, how to brief a case, and then read through lots of case law. They'd work a lot with case law. So I like, I like giving them both options.
I really appreciate the process that you went through, and thank you for your leadership. I think that having the, working with the two teachers, as well as they work with their colleagues, as well as student voice, and really getting the feedback, I think that really made a very powerful adoption and result, so thank you so much for that.
I love that it integrates from younger grades, too. To me, that alignment is, I mean, I remember back in the day when everything was autonomous, and that was sort of the movement toward autonomy in buildings, and to be able to align buildings and grades is an enormous amount of work. I think it's sort of like the behind-the-scenes stuff that no one gets to see, because you don't, it doesn't come home in your kid's backpack, and nobody ever talks about it, but so important when they get to high school, when they start to merge different schools, to have that alignment, to be able to start in relatively the same place, and to be intentional about picking texts that, and resources that do that and ask those questions, and I also love the student feedback that you asked for.
I move that the AP government textbook adoption be approved as presented.
Can I support? Support?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. Motion.
So this nerd would like to look at the book when it comes in. Would you email us?
I actually would, too. It's really exciting.
We want online access, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Todd, thank you for the board update, too. I didn't really get a chance to send you an email, and I meant to, I just haven't really had the time. I got as far as like a half an email to Paul, but the update that you provided us, that we got a more comprehensive explanation of everything. We were able to read it so we could come tonight prepared with questions and sort of cut down the time that teachers had to show up. I mean, it was just, this was the perfect example of what I was envisioning to cut down the time of having to go through duplicate information at a board meeting. It was really well done. It was the perfect amount of information in the update, so I felt like I could come in prepared and not have to go through all the preliminary stuff that three committee members had already gone through, so thank you for that.
I thought that worked really well, especially with Jackie, then going back and reviewing everything, so it was almost like a college course that we were in. So this is what we studied last time, this is what we talked about, kind of refreshing everything, and of course, I get a lot of help with those updates as well, so.
Yeah, if we use this as the model, I mean, going forward, I really thought this was great. The perfect amount of information shared in the perfect format. I loved Jackie's rendition as well. I'm not in that committee, so, you know, I have a different perspective. I didn't get to see the two hours that you spent doing this, but I felt really informed because of the, all the material that were provided to us in advance. Thank you for that feedback.
It was a very long meeting. Exciting meeting.
It was, right?
I know, it's the only one I've been in all year. May I come back?
That's what I did.
So next on the.
An hour.
Exactly. Next on the agenda is the board elections, so just kind of outline the process. So, you know, as I indicated in my report, we're doing elections now, so we have them in place by, you know, by January, when Pat Watson, new superintendent, is there. You know, as a board, you know, we each nominated candidates. We either, as candidates, either accepted or didn't accept or declined the nominations, and right now, I have in front of me sort of, you know, where we are in terms of the nominations and acceptance. We have two people who have accepted for president, myself and Mark, two people that have accepted for vice president, Jackie and Cynthia, one for secretary, that's Lisa, and one for treasurer, that's Howard. So, you know, in terms of, you know, looking at a process, what we did similar to, almost like the superintendent search, maybe we can discuss the candidates, the two positions where we have two people running, and we can kind of go around and get a sense on how we're feeling, and then at that point, maybe make a motion when we sort of look like we have sort of like a majority for either for president and vice president. That's my thought. So I opened it up for discussion with the first, with president. So I won't talk first, because I'm one of the people that's up and running, so I don't know if you want to start with Jennifer, and we can go this way, and then we can go that way for vice president.
Sure. So I would support Paul for president because of time spent on district activities and integral role in communication and cohesion, and just working, continuing the work that was started this year and continuing with Mr. Watson. I just think it's a good fit.
I'd like to support Mr. Bank. This is Mark's tenth year on the board. He has not yet served as board president. He's very excited about the work on the scope and design, and very engaged already in trying to be sure that the community is going to be supportive, and I think this is a great time for somebody with his skill set and enthusiasm for that project to move forward, and he's obviously knows our existing administrative team really well, and is looking forward to working with Mr. Watson.
Yeah, well, I actually nominated Mark, and I know that he's really excited to have the opportunity to serve as president. He's served as vice president several times in other positions, but he has not yet served as president. And so I think that he would be being, continue Paul's great leadership and working with the team and working with the new superintendent, and I think that it'd be great that we offer him that chance to do that.
I'll decline the speak since Mark is not here, so we're on an even playing field. Obviously, I would support myself.
All right. I support Paul. I had a chance over the last year to see how well he performed in the role of president. He, his communication with the community is stellar. He participates in more community and school events than is humanly possible. He's collaborative, he listens to everybody. I mean, I can go on and on, but Paul, you've got my support.
I also want to support Paul. Over this year, there have been a lot of things going on in the district, not only the superintendent's search, obviously, but we, you know, did the student intern program, the high school start initiative started. That still is a work in progress, but Paul is an innovator, definitely has the kids in mind first in all things that he does. We saw today, even when an emergency occurred, Paul was texting and tweeting and putting things out on Facebook of communication, which again, as Lisa said, I've asked him numerous times how he keeps his regular job, considering all the time.
We need some written proof that you actually do have a job.
We see he's got a tie on.
I'll send you my W, too.
No, that would make me jealous.
So I think Paul has just shown so much dedication to the district, and now with the new superintendent starting, Paul's been able to learn the job during the first year, and now will be, I think, an excellent person to integrate Mr. Watson into the Bloomfield Hills world, so I will support Paul.
Do we have a discussion? Do we want to make a motion? Someone want to make a motion for president?
I think I made the original motion for the nomination, so I'd like to nominate Paul for president for the two thousand twenty calendar year.
I'll second.
Do we roll call?
Oh, we don't need a second for a nomination, do we?
Do you make a motion? You don't need to?
Not for this.
Not for elections.
Yeah, not for elections.
So we'll do roll call. Jennifer?
Aye.
Cynthia?
Nay.
Jackie?
I guess I'm gonna support Mark, since I have nominated him, so I'll say nay.
Um, yea. Aye. So we pass a motion for two president. Okay, we'll go to vice president.
And I'd just like to withdraw from being nominated, yes.
For vice president?
Yes.
Do we have a motion? I'll make, I'll make the, well, no, I can't make the motion.
Okay, so motion for Cynthia Van Ooyen to be the board's vice president for two thousand twenty.
Support?
Don't need.
We don't need.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, congratulations. Cynthia?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for Lisa for secretary?
I move that Lisa Afrosbe secretary for two thousand twenty calendar year.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Lisa, congratulations. Do we have a motion for Howard to be treasurer?
I nominated Howard, so I will motion for Mr. Howard Baron to be the board's treasurer in two thousand twenty.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Howard. We have our officer elections. Now we could move on to scope and design.
And as Brian and Andy make their way up, they will be going through some slides that Vicki's gonna pop up, but then I also have these handouts to put in front of you. Given today's events, it was a little bit of a scramble to wrap up what we wanted to do.
You don't need me to say Mark.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, I'm in Blue Gills. My day didn't go as planned today. And I would like to just congratulate.
I'm going to start my workday after this meeting.
I would like to congratulate the high school staff and administration and transportation of the students for the way they handled everything. And thank you, board, for supporting our liaison officer, our security officer, helping with me with new buses and some of the things we came up with, including Blue Point and the boot device. And knowing those kids were supported by those today was very helpful. Okay, Andy. Well, I go first, don't I?
You do, you do. And I'll just, I want to echo Brian real quickly too. I'm just, all the information I got as a middle school administrator and having parents that were in the building towards the end of the day and whatnot, they were really complimentary to our staff and students that the things that we practiced with our students were implemented today. And the kids knew what to do. It's going to be chaotic. That's the nature of a situation like that. But the kids knew what to do, the staff were supportive and guided them in that process. I heard that from several parents. Their kids had said how cool, calm, and collected this staff were in a really difficult situation. And just to hear the real positive feedback about my colleagues and the kids that are put into our care each day, just really, really proud to be a part of this.
Can I ask you a brief question about that? I'm sorry, it's way off topic. But were the middle school kids, I know that they were aware of what was going on, could you gauge, was there obviously some fear and anxiety, but levels of managed, I mean, I'm just curious how it affected students that weren't in the high school?
We practiced the shelter in place, secure mode type drills, and so all of our buildings other than BHHS went into that mode.
Right, okay, I did know that, yeah.
And so, you know, our staff, we try to keep it business as usual as much as possible. And I think a lot of our students weren't aware of what was going on, you know. We have fourth grade through eighth grade, so it's a wide range of what's appropriate at each of those levels to share. And you know, it was really, it was pretty much business as usual at the middle school. I had a couple of parents contact me and say, should I come get my child? I said, no, they're having kind of a normal school day.
So they didn't really know necessarily that it was a lockdown because it was just.
It was just the perimeter that was locked down.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's just. Yeah, the mode we went into was really just limiting the movement in and out of the building.
Okay.
Receses were all held indoors today. Nothing goes on outside. It's probably an increased level of supervision in the hallways. It's just, you know, being a little bit more on alert.
All right, thank you for doing that.
Sure, yep.
So a quick history lesson, May of 2012, we successfully passed the high school bond. And in the fall of '15, the new high school opened, which was four and a half years ago now, right? And we told the community at that time that we were going to take a four-year break before we addressed our K-8 facilities. And so about a year ago, we shared with the board, you know, our findings of our updated facility and technology assessment. And also in 2014, 2014 through 16, we did that master property planning exercise, which ended up in the cell, selling Hickory Grove and the Wabik property. So we did the facility and technology assessment. We talked about instructional programming limitations and the instructional space challenges that we have in some of our facilities. And then in 2019, our strategic planning, and this plays right into it, ensure safe and secure facilities. And we do have safe and secure facilities, but we can always have safer and more secure facilities. Support students' learning and engagement with the state-of-the-art facilities, technology, and materials. We're all aware that our K-8 facilities are aging and can use some attention. And expand the availability and community use of district facilities. So options presented to the Board of Education almost a year ago, we could, we came up with about $33 million in critical needs. We could manage that decline with the sinking fund dollars that we have. And you know, those words are chosen by me very carefully. Managing a decline is not something you really want to be proud of, but we have the ability to do that. When we get to the end of that sinking fund, we had that stop sign to represent, you know, you came to the end, you managed the decline, and now what? Now you have $33 million of critical needs plus whatever's in front of you. If you were to spend $33 million and take care of those critical needs, we kind of looked at that as the road was closed, because you're not going to tear apart old facilities that you just put in infrastructure money to try to reconfigure them or kind of reinvent the district. So the board decided to have us pursue $120 to $190 million of a brighter future ahead. And that would be to look at grade configurations and building configurations, knowing that our cohort sizes at our middle schools were getting really too small. Is this still me?
Yes.
So the Board of Education put together a scope and design task force, and Mark Bank is the chair, Jennifer Cook's involved, Cynthia Van Ooyen. And then we got involved in community engagement to co-construct our solutions. We assembled a scope and design group, which is a mix of our community members, and focus panels that could give us feedback on different discussion topics that we had. So we got to work this summer as we started to plan, and I'll recognize my colleagues, Jason Rubel and Rebecca Enders, were the two other building-level administrators that were part of that planning committee, as well as Todd Bidlak, Sarah Fairman, and Kimberly Hampton. So collectively, we all worked together. I didn't miss anyone, Todd, did I? Kimberly, Sarah, Rebecca, Jason, Andy, Brian.
Rob.
Rob attended some of the meetings, but he wasn't part of that planning piece. But collectively, we worked together to plan and facilitate meetings with a good representative group from across the district, parents, current parents, future parents, former parents, you saw on the previous slide, I'll jump back to that. Really, when you look at the different focus panel groups that we had there, long-term residents, secondary families, elementary families, we had people on our scope and design group that were really from each of those designations there. So the first topic we talked about was safety.
Andy, I think they mentioned one thing about Rob, you know, he was involved because of his longstanding history in the district of helping select members of the scope and design based on his history. I think that's.
That's a good point. That is, he was a big part of helping to assemble that group, and so he worked independently from those who were facilitating the group, as we didn't want to mix those two pieces there. So our first topic that we really dug into was the safety and security within our schools. That was at our September 23 meeting. And that was really a bit of a getting to know you and establishing some of that, some of those norms within those meetings. We then shifted on to what we knew was going to be the bulk of our work and started to talk about building configurations. And really, you can't talk about building configurations without talking about instructional and support spaces, programming. I think as many of you, I think all of you are probably aware, the current configuration that we have with fourth grade through eighth grade, and I'm really focusing on that middle school level, because the programming goes into course selections and electives that kids are participating in and choosing to participate in. When you get into cohort sizes that we have with West Hills and East Hills, really only having one feeder elementary school. Right now, we have cohort sizes at grade levels of 116. And I think 116 is our sixth grade at West Hills right now. So when you go to start to look and say, okay, we want to build our seventh grade orchestra next year, and these sixth graders go to select who's, select the courses that they're going to take, we're ending up with some classes that are really, really small. So we realize that programming is at risk if we don't do something about that. And so that was a big part of our conversations. We started out October 7th introducing some of that and talking about some of the different models that were being presented. We had six, seven different models over the course of the next few meetings that we went through, and I see some of my fellow committee members there looking like, yes, we did. We had all kinds of different colored cardstock showing many different bubbles looking different directions, or showing different options. That conversation continued on to, into the October 21st meeting, and then on to the November 4th meeting. And the November 4th meeting, we hosted at the Lasser site, which was pretty interesting because we got to take a look at some of the assets that the district has that are currently not being used by a school being attached to it anymore. So looking at that, it really had a lot of people's, the wheels were turning, and people were really looking like, wow, this is a great asset. At that meeting, you know what, I'm getting ahead of myself, aren't I? Because we have, it's on the next slide. I'm going to pause for a second here on that. November 4th, we were at Lasser, and we were still talking about building configurations and the other topics. And then our final meeting was just this past Monday. So we've had a couple of good evening events this week. To summarize the work that came out of all of these meetings, really, we had to look at those enrollment projections, and we know that our projections have been very accurate and show that we will continue to maintain our current enrollment for the next 10 to 15 years. Beyond that, 20, 30 years out, it's hard to say, are we going to increase, are we going to decrease? A lot depends on what happens in the economy. And we looked at multiple configurations, looked at best practices, and the current operations that we have within the district. On November 4th, as I started to reference, that was a pretty crucial meeting, I think, because what we did there is we had, through our work in the previous meetings, we had really narrowed it down to two options. And one of those was building one middle school for the entire district at the Lasser site. It would be 1,200 to 1,250 students on the one campus. A conceptual drawing was made for that.
Andy, when you say we, you're saying like the whole committee, the scope and design committee as a whole? When you say, when you keep saying we, this is the group of 30 scope and design members?
So in each meeting, we would be taking the feedback from the committee. And through that feedback, we'd come back as a team of the six or seven of us and refine the models, oh, this model and this model kind of need to be merged together type of thing. And Brian was able to involve, it was French at that point, right? Where they would come up with just conceptual drawings. And it's, you know, we have these, we have the board here for the one we'll get to in a moment, but we had a conceptual drawing of what the single middle school would look like on Lasser's campus. And the other beautiful thing is we were actually able to walk around the existing assets that we have in the district to see that potential and see how that would be integrated into the new construction that would be added on to the Lasser campus. The other option that was presented at that point was a two-middle school option utilizing East Hills and West Hills as an east and west campus to capture half the students, which their populations would be roughly 600 students per building there at the middle school level. Through that meeting, we were able to take a ton of feedback from our committee of people, and lots of different perspectives. And we were diligently writing notes as we did some activities to capture that feedback, how people felt about one high school versus two middle schools. And it was really, there was almost like half the people were like, well, I'm going towards this one middle school model because these facilities we already have here at Lasser are so incredible. And there were the people that were like, well, one middle school would be too big. It would be 1,200 students. But at the same time, I don't really like what I'm seeing with the two-middle school option here, where really not a whole lot space-wise would change for our students if we were utilizing West Hills and East Hills as those two buildings. So we compiled all that feedback, and the group, we were supposed to meet November 9th to kind of formalize recommendations or outcomes from our meetings, and we knew we were not prepared to do that at that time. So we agreed as a committee, the 30 of us, to delay our next meeting until we could do a little bit deeper of a dig into developing, whether it was a new model or taking this feedback and seeing what we could come up with there, and really having a much deeper plan developed by the time we had our next meeting, which again, was three days ago. And so, and I started to say that, so we did some work from November 4th to December 16th. A big part of that was Brian reached out, and we had a traffic study completed that, or conducted that indicated traffic would fail in one middle school. And so. On Lasser. On Lasser's site. And so you might say, but 10th through 12th graders lived at that site for three or four years, three years? Two years. Two years, thank you. I clearly wasn't there. For two years. And as we dug into that, well, student drivers were driving onto the campus and parking for the day. We had less buses because we didn't need as many buses with the number of students that would drive themselves. And with the middle school campus, if it was one school, I think it was Long Lake and Telegraph, or Long Lake and Lasser would be backed up to the school, past the school, and same from the north end as well. So traffic would be meeting on the campus.
To my house, yeah.
Yeah, so you would be a very happy person at 305, 310, or whatever it would be.
Well, because Andy, it just wasn't for a few years when we had the one school on two campuses, but since the 1960s, that school had 1,200 kids in it.
Right.
For decades, until the population shrunk.
Well, and I think because of it being a high school setting, we realized that you weren't talking the same volume of traffic coming on and off the campus at both the start of the day and end of the day, as well as a reduced number of buses, because our middle schoolers aren't driving themselves to school. So. Yeah, one of the biggest changes is the parent activity. So the parents are dropping off and then leaving the site, and them leaving the site is causing the conflict, which really messes up traffic.
It's one, it kind of.
Right. It's two, it's actually. Coming in and going. That's right.
Howard, you need to go to pick up or drop off at the preschool. You need to feel the joy. You can understand.
A middle school parent recently, it's, you know how that goes.
No, I think that the going and coming is something I hadn't thought about.
Oh, yeah, you need to do. He doesn't even have to have somebody in his car. You can just drive there around the circle.
Just for fun, just for fun.
We're just driving along Lake Road at 8:20 regardless, as we did during the superintendent meeting.
Well, and the other piece to that is you look at start times and end times too, the high school's starting earlier in the morning, which traffic volumes are slightly less than it would be at 8 o'clock as well. And again.
So we'll have to change the start time as well.
Well, and that would be, right, that could be, that's another discussion, of course, right. So we used all that feedback, and we began to develop, we heard, boy, we like the size of two middle schools. You can still accomplish the programming piece. Smaller, more personal, more individualization probably going on with that setting for a middle schooler, a middle school student. We heard, we love the assets that are at Lasser already, the existing assets that are there. In the two-middle school plan with east and west, Bloomfield Hills Middle School wasn't really being utilized, so it wasn't making the most of the assets that we already have as a district. And so we worked to develop another model that has come to be known as like the north-south middle school model.
Can I just, to not being part of this committee, just to sort of get some perspective, where, I know it was the end of October where you, where the board has special study session, and you updated the four members of the, well, all of us, but specifically the four members that weren't part of scope and design, was that, because all this is very familiar to me, I know we're doing a sort of a recap for everybody too.
Right, right.
But because that, this is sort of at the point that we were in our late October special board meeting, where we got a sense that we liked two middle schools, but not the location of the two middle schools, for various reasons.
Correct.
So timeline-wise, does that put us at like late, we're caught up, Howard and myself and Paul and Jackie, the brew, everything from November 4th on is where I think that we would, no, is that right?
A lot of this is new information.
Oh, it is? Okay, I'm not sure where we come in.
November 4th was our last scope and design group meeting.
And the three of us weren't there because we were.
Right.
Oh, that's a good point. That's a good point. There was a conflict on the one.
Yeah, okay.
Small conflict.
Hiring a superintendent.
If you remember the last time, at least that I remember, the last time the board got any update was when we did the brainstorming session, and we had, you know, charts on the wall, and Kelly was making marks and things, and it was just lots of.
Yeah, I think.
It was lots of information.
Did you miss the one that was in here?
Yeah, I think, and I don't know how many more slides. I think, yeah, let them finish presenting, because eventually, it's a recommendation from the scope and design committee to the board, so I'll let you guys conclude.
Okay, so November 4th was our fourth meeting, December 16th was our fifth meeting with the scope and design group between those two. Between those two, a lot of work was done to develop a much deeper, much, to deeply develop a model that came to be known as the north-south model, utilizing the Loser site and the BHMS site as a north middle school and a south middle school. And we'll get into that here as, as we talk about. So, so with December 16th, the new concept of the north and south middle schools utilizing Loser and BHMS were presented to the scope and design group. Brian and I led that meeting. We were very optimistic. We're thinking, this is really a great, it's, it's taking all the feedback we've, we've had from the scope and design group. And it's, it's kind of taken the best of the one, best of the two, and, and kind of merged them together. And we were pretty optimistic. People would, would, would see the, the strengths in this model as well. And I think it was within the first fifteen minutes, Cynthia, Jennifer, where people, right away, they're like, okay, so now how do we, how do we move? What's the next step? You guys got it this time. And, and you, you heard us. You heard the feedback that we gave you and you actually used that feedback to create something that, that will, will really transform our district for, for decades and, and puts a nice plan into place. So, out of that, a decision was made, again, pretty quickly, to recommend to the board to move forward with this, with this design. And what that design was, what that recommendation was from the scope and design group and the board task force, is to proceed with a bond initiative for two sixth through eighth grade middle schools. One at, one would be the north, whatever it would be named, at the Loser site, and one would be the south at the BHMS site. And on this slide are those designs, and I know things have already changed since these were first created. The board behind us here has the two middle schools at the top here, with the Loser site being at the top and then the BHMS site being just below it there. It would be four elementaries. And the big change here would be that Lone Pine would utilize West Hills and become West Hills. Well, it would be, it would remain Lone Pine, but it would be at the West Hill site. Eastover would utilize East Hills building, so it would be Eastover at the East Hills site. And then the two other buildings, and, and I should have mentioned, with, with West Hills and East Hills buildings for Lone Pine and Eastover, you'd, you'd maintain, you wouldn't have to really add on to the buildings other than safe and secure entryways. But they would receive renovations through all the classrooms and really make them the best learning spaces for elementary students. And then we had two elementaries that are current elementaries that would continue to function as elementaries, but would need more significant renovations and additions to really make them comparable. So, Way and Conant would continue on in their, in their existing buildings with additions to accommodate roughly five hundred fifty to five hundred sixty students is what all four buildings would, would have.
Do you see them as equivalent enrollment? Would that be the goal for the four buildings?
The goal would be balanced enrollment across the four buildings.
How close are we right now?
We're not extremely far off. If you look at the K-five populations at Lone Pine and Conant, I always mix them up. One, one of them, if you were to look at the fourth and fifth graders that are currently at our middle schools that are, that would be at the elementaries, our K-five population at Lone Pine, I think, is five hundred thirty. Conant is five hundred twenty. Way is four hundred eighty. And Eastover, brace yourselves, is seven hundred ten. So, it gives you the idea of where, you know, where some of that balancing would have to happen. But we're not extremely far off. You, you know, you'd be maintaining your four elementary identities. Two of them would, would have new sites. The renovations and additions that French drew up for us, it's, it's similar to what other districts have done as well, to really add on with a multipurpose gymnasium that can function as a cafeteria, if you so choose, to have students eat in a cafeteria as opposed to classrooms. It just has a lot of flexibility and it's a really good-sized space. It's at least double of what the current gym is at both of those buildings in size.
Is the four, you know, so obviously the two, you've, you know, the problem of the cohort size, is the four elementaries at five hundred each, is that solve whatever cohort size in terms of programming from an academic point of view as well?
Yeah, they both, they, all four would be about five hundred fifty. And that, when an elementary school's five hundred fifty kids, you're, you're talking about four sections at each grade level. You're talking about a physical education teacher who has, who's able to be in one place working with the kids' K-five without having to travel and, and be spread and, and, you know.
So, this solves the travel problem?
It sol, solves a, it solves, this design solves, if I had to put a percentage on it, it's probably seventy, seventy-five percent less travel, you know? So, you, if you, if you take the number of people traveling right now, there, there's still probably going to have to be some traveling teachers at the middle school level. But at the elementary level, you're looking at full-time specials teachers who are, who are, who have full-time work, because they have enough sections where they're engaging with all of our kids at that building.
Andy, you were talking about the size of each one of the elementary schools. Would this require any changes of the catchment areas?
In order to balance enrollment, we would have to look at, at that. We would have to look, there'd be some minor changes. But it would, it would have to be changes, because currently, again, when, as it went through those numbers, you're looking at five thirty, five twenty, four eighty, and seven ten. So, if you're, if you're looking to get to five fifty, you're never gonna get it perfectly, right? But, but you'd wanna look to try to balance it out as, as, as much as you can.
But this would resolve, so, you know, because obviously we have two capacity areas right now. One is at Eastover and the other is in BHMS. Obviously, a north-south model would resolve the middle school capacity issue, because you'd have two schools, two elementaries feeding one, north, and two feeding the south.
Correct.
And we'd figure out how, which ones those were. So, that would figure, that would resolve the BHMS capacity issue. But obviously, through a catchment change, we would have to resolve the Eastover.
Well, more important, the cohort size issue.
Well, yeah, yeah, well.
Right, there's, there's, there's several benefits that are, that are solved through these.
Exactly.
Through this model here. And, and some of the other models that we used as well would have had some, solved some of the similar challenges that we face right now based on our current configuration. Additionally, preschools, there was data collected in twenty seventeen, I think, that was done through, through a survey. And when you look at like the hotspots on the map of where is preschool needed within our district, and when you talk to Lisa Grieglack, she will tell you that currently Fox Hills and Conant's preschools fill up first. And she, I think she said to me, we could fill Conant's preschool twice if we had enough room. And so, when we, when we were looking at, again, utilizing the assets that we have and the, the demand and need based on the data that we have, we would have two preschools continue on, we would continue to have two preschools. So, we would have the Conant site. We would actually add on to the current preschool there. I think we would be up to about eleven classrooms at, at the Conant site. And then we would utilize the Eastover site. As Eastover students have moved over to East Hills, that building, we would utilize that building with about eighteen classrooms of preschool, which would, which would.
What was the decision between that and keeping Fox Hills expanding on that?
Do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so Fox Hills needs a lot more work than Eastover would need. And Lisa's convinced that Eastover is, is arguably a better site with its relationship to I-75 and, and Adams Road. It's not buried back in the neighborhood.
So, the cost, you wanna?
I'll just take over.
Yeah.
How's that rule? So, the cost range for this, this model and the other models we were looking at, they were really similar. It's about a hundred seventy-five to a hundred and eighty-five million dollars. These drawings are very, very, very conceptual. We just had to prove that it would work and get a budget together. That dollar amount does include a swimming pool at the north middle school at the Loser site. It also includes thirty-seven million dollars for other district facilities and community spaces, including the farm, the nature center, the relocation of transportation and maintenance, booth, IA, Wing Lake. Did I forget anything?
I think like a robotics community.
That would stay at Loser.
Yeah, so the robotics would stay at Loser and that's, that's part of one of the additions up there.
Demolition.
And demolition, yep. Oops, what did I do?
Athletic enhancement.
So, I guess, just to answer the why of, of why we did all this, maximizing the instructional programming, addressing the learning space challenges that we have in our current facilities, addressing the facility needs and technology needs for the long term, which we shared with you earlier, and provides flexibility for the future. The, the really neat thing about this concept that we have in front of you is that the middle, the north middle school can be constructed with three academic wings that could be added on to in the future vertically. Those single-story wings could be two-story wings. If you had an increased enrollment and needed more space, you could add on to that building. If you had a decrease in middle school enrollment, you could, you know, consider closing down the south middle school and expanding the size of the north middle school. And of course, we're not talking about in the next ten or fifteen or twenty years, but just somewhere down the road. So, it does provide for that flexibility as well as, if you ever had to go to a, a three elementary, the south middle school could become an elementary if your enrollment had declined that much.
So, Brian, sorry, before you move on, could you just speak to the actual ages of the building and your bullet point three here, facility and technology needs? For the community's sake, because I hope that this presentation gets broadcast on our website, you know, what, you know, not that we are in love with bright shiny objects, because we have this beautiful high school, but, but why do we need to create new spaces based on the current facilities?
Well.
Great segue.
Some of, I mean, some of that is just the delivery of instruction.
Right.
And, and the size of the spaces and the quality of the spaces that we have. When, geez, when you go back in time to when Eastover was built, that was a teeny little building and it had a tiny little gym. Now, it's a much, much larger building and it still has a tiny little gym. And when there's an activity for a grade level there, the parents are streaming out into the hallway and can't see. And we actually added a door so some of them can kinda sneak in the back. The, the site restraints with our current configurations of bus loops and parent drop-offs, all that needs to be reworked at, at almost all of our sites. And, you know, a, a bond is something that will help us get to where we need to be. One interest, one interesting thing about the concept at Conant that you see, and this is just kind of a crazy concept, but we talked about a super loop and having the Conant drive actually connect with the, the middle school property to have nice long Q lines. And if you've ever been at Conant at dismissal with that one curb cut, it's.
I don't think you wanna mention the Q line.
It's really, it's really problematic, so.
Isn't there wetlands there, between the two buildings?
Yeah, the concept would actually wrap around the, the wetland.
Going into the fields or on the north end?
If you can see that, just goes right around the backside of the wetland.
Oh, it's, okay. I'd have to look at it carefully.
That was maybe my question, too. And maybe you're gonna get to it later, maybe we ask about it later. But Conant BHMS, I always thought that there was this wetlands, I'm not sure about protected wetlands or an atom sensing that that's not an issue, but that we wouldn't be able to get the capacity that we needed with parking, I mean, beside the one entry-exit at Conant, the parking's a nightmare. How, how, how were we able to maintain two buildings still on that site? I thought it was, the land space would really just accommodate one larger building.
There's a lot of opportunities for expansion on that site. It's flat. There is the wetlands in the center, which we need to avoid. But if you look at the layout of that, of the parking configuration and the loops at Conant, it's really, really inefficient with lots of little islands and broke-out spaces. Again, this is just conceptual. There's even room at Conant in the front of the building, this playground area, which could be utilized if we needed to. They drew kind of some new parking there in the back. But again, these are just very, very conceptual. And if we can get through this just a little further, I can talk a little deeper.
And just really quick, I just have two historical points that really hit me as we were going through the process. So, years and years ago, we had half-day kindergarten. And so, in one day, one classroom housed two classes of half-day kindergarten. Now, we have full-day kindergarten required, yet with not much change to the building, we're making it work. But the spaces are really not adequate for how those kindergarteners learn. And the other piece is special education laws have changed a lot and the requirements have changed a lot. But our buildings are, have, were constructed so long ago, that's also not allowing us a very easy way to comply.
All these buildings were built before IDEA.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, all these buildings were built in nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. Special education didn't come around till the middle nineteen seventies.
Yes, thank you.
Cynthia?
So, I've got a question about the, if the law is changed in the next few years to require mandatory four-year-old preschool.
Or mandatory kindergarten. Right now kindergarten's optional.
Will these plans accommodate that, the need for that flexibility?
We, we have to finish programming, but we think there's a lot of capacity at the new Eastover site and the new Lone Pine site. And, you know, not knowing what those requirements would be, whether the district just would be required to house the four-year-olds and not particularly like at their home school, that would provide us with a lot of, of space. And you could reconsider your preschool options and repurpose those spaces as well. So, there really is a lot of flexibility here.
I got a philosophical question for you that we really didn't think deeply about. I guess I'd throw it out at you. When we've looked at our facility configurations in past years, one of the questions that we've considered deeply was, how important was it that we protect the borders of the district? And as we, as I'm looking at this plan, we are now taking down Pine Lake, we're looking about taking down Lone Pine, talking about taking down Fox Hills, we're kinda going all centralized. We're not thinking about trying to protect our borders and trying to draw in more people. Is that something that you all thought about at all?
I have to answer that on TV?
Sorry.
I didn't buy into that theory back then, so I.
Okay.
But we still have Eastover and as a preschool, and we would still have West Hills in West Bloomfield Township as an elementary school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia. So, so.
I'm just, I'm just, it's a question, it's a philosophical.
So, now, we're looking at a study session on the sixteenth of January, where we're gonna take a deeper dive into this and a board meeting in January thirtieth, which would be kinda near the timeline of if we were going to go for a May vote, we would have to make a decision then, or the board would have to. So, before the sixteenth, which is really, really soon, so Andy and I are gonna start on Monday at French and we're gonna take a deeper dive into cost. I know we need to detail the scope, because you're going to, as a board, you're gonna wanna know more details about the scope. I, I'm, if I was a board member, I would. And then a draft of the construction timelines and the transition plans. And this'll just be a draft. But, you know, people are gonna wanna know, how is this gonna affect my kid? When would this building open? And, and not that we could give you something super concrete, but we could give you a well-thought-out draft of that. And then a working draft of the enrollment balancing plans, you know? What would that look like to shift some of the population out of the Eastover catchment? And then some preliminary images of each facility. And at, at this point, it might be kind of cartoonish or watercolor-ish, but.
The robotics CAD team will help you with that.
Yeah. Well, I think it's, it's important to know that, I think we'll be presenting you with more detail than many other school districts would have at that decision point. But we know that we have a community that's very sensitive to what's happening and we wanna provide you and them with as much information as we can. And if you're going to be moving my kid from this catchment to another one, what is that facility gonna look like? What's it gonna feel like? So, I feel like we owe that to you. So, we will have everything we can by the sixteenth, knowing that we'll have even more by the end of January.
So, I do wanna make a couple of questions, you know, because I know my colleagues, especially now in scope and design, are gonna have some questions. So, one of the things I've suggested, I've talked with Tina and the team about is starting a Google Doc with these questions, because a lot of the questions that may be asked tonight, you may not be able to answer. You know, you know, obviously, this is based on a recommendation of a significant amount of community members, you know, that attended scope and design, including three of my colleagues on the board. And then, you know, so this presentation, which is helpful. I know the team has been putting together a website, because community members have asked for, you know, obviously, people wanna know what's going on. There's a lot of rumors flying out there. So, this is helpful that we. So this is helpful that we could obviously put out there. Again, this is not, you know, at this point, has been approved by the board, but this is a recommendation from a design team to the board. So again, just in fairness, and we'll make sure we clarify that in what's being presented on this, on the website, that we, that we open up. But again, there's going to be, you know, a series of questions, we're now in the 16th, so I think that Google Drive, which I think some of my colleagues already started putting questions in there, which we'll answer, which will help us for the discussion on the 16th, with the idea that we'll vote. And, you know, one of the questions I know that's out there is, not necessarily the design, but whether or not it makes sense to put it on a May ballot versus a future ballot. For, you know, for reasons, and just to be transparent, a May ballot does cost money because it's a singular, so it may cost the district anywhere between, at this point, an estimate is $80,000 to $97,000 versus do we put it on a, you know, a later ballot? And, you know, I know Tina's working on pros and cons of that, which will also be shared. So I wanted to just, I want to just put that out there, and then if any of my colleagues have any additional questions or comments.
I have some additional things to discuss, but I think they're board kind of things. I think we should talk about them tonight. I don't want to keep Andy and Brian here if it's not really related to these. So before you leave, I just wanted to get your, is May a realistic timeframe to be able to get all of this done and on a ballot?
Yeah, May is realistic.
Okay.
It's going to be a pretty fast pace to get there, but it's realistic. And that's just the level of information that we can provide you. You know, we're never going to start design without having a bond that's been passed. So you can only take it so far.
Right, right.
Unless you just want to start paying for services that might never get utilized.
Right.
So yeah, and getting to Lisa's point, questions right now, and maybe, because we won't keep you till, you know, till the wee hours. So any questions directed at Andy and Brian, and then we could, if we want to have more discussion. Howard?
I have numerous, numerous questions, which I will not bring up tonight, because they're really getting into the logistics, the detail, the cost, selling of properties, I mean, it can go on and on. I've been saying since the summer, this is, these are wonderful things that we need to be doing. We've got buildings that are from the 50s and 60s, education has changed, not only the way we do pedagogy, special education, you know, this district had 10,000 students, now we've got 5,000 students. So we've been shoehorning kids into buildings for decades now. Our major objective here is to win the community's support. We have to get, normally, typically, when you do a bond or some sort of millage, you want to shoot for having 60% of support from the community. And, yes, it's constrained timing for you to pull all the detail together between now and the end of January, but that's not my concern. My concern is, how are we going to be able to know for certain that we will get 60% of support of the voters of this community? There is no way that in 30 or 40 days from now, that we will have that assurance. You guys are just pulling together the detail. But we need to have focus groups, we need to have town hall meetings, we need to do market research, we need to do all, you talk about six different alternatives. We need to be able to come up with a business case for people who know nothing about schools. 80% of the people in this community don't know anything about the schools, quite frankly. And we all remember the controversy we had over two high schools to one high school. We don't want to do that again. We also look at the experience of what happened in the township over the summer of 2019, where the board made a vote without a lot of detail, and quite frankly, was a split vote. And they got their clock cleaned when they went to the community and the voters. And there, it was a redux of what happened with us, with public comment and yelling, screaming, and huge tumult, which is still going on right now with the township.
Howard, is this more for the board?
Yeah, this is more about board discussion.
No, so what I'm saying is this, on our website, and in your presentation, you have May. Take that off, my view. Maybe we say future ballot. Let's not focus ourselves on a timeline of, we've got to get all this done by, ended by 40 days from now, by the end of January.
But I don't think it's there.
But that's what they're showing, and that's what Shira, and that's what our website possibility is showing.
I think this is a recommendation of the committee, though.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I don't, I mean, it's not, I think this is more of a board discussion.
I think May was listed because that was really the next possible-
I understand, but that-
But just to acknowledge, Howard, if I may?
Yes.
Since the feedbacks come in over the past 24 hours, we have changed that. So the hot, the handout that I just gave you tonight is the latest that we scrambled for. I didn't expect that you'd have time, just like we scrambled. So now it just says to be placed on a future ballot.
Thank you.
The website's not published, the one page of those were all drafts, so thank you.
But, yeah, but I think we all know, even, we all know that it's, this is not you two, this is, you're just presenting, but this is something you write. Getting to Lisa's point, we need to discuss further as a board. I just say right now, are there any questions related for Andy and Brian that we need so we can have a discussion as a board?
And just a quick comment, I skipped this last slide, but it does say 2020 election date options, May, August, November.
Thank you.
And the reason why we had been talking about May is, one of our charges was to explore a bond at the first possible opportunity, which was March. And then we lost March, so the next one was May.
I understand.
The scope and design committee said May, so we had May up there. Me personally, and as your facility director, if we could get this passed in November, it really doesn't change things very much.
Okay.
However, if we get past November and the economy changes, we've got some real concerns in our facilities. And we would have to rethink the sinking fund, we would have to rethink something. And I'm not trying to scare you, but, you know, I've been putting duct tape on these buildings for 13 years, and some things are going to come to a head.
We could go out for another sinking, for a modification of sinking fund. As you're doing your analysis, if you could look at also not only your transition plans of what's going to be happening, and when kids are in the building or out of the building, and, you know, year by year, how this whole thing is going to work out, but also all these real estate issues, you're relocating transport, you're possibly, what's going to happen with Pine Lake, what's going to happen to Lone Pine, what's going to happen to Fox Hills?
Cindy, Google Doc, we'll put that in the Google Doc questions.
I know Brian said something as a facilities guy, I'll say something as the instructional guy. I look at like the, the equitable opportunities that are within this plan, that really will transform what we're doing in our buildings for our kids. That to me is, is at the center of this work. That to me is why I look at May and say, boy, we had the momentum and feeling in that room when people looked at this and said, wow, we could do this for our kids. And I understand, I understand-
Not disagreeing at all.
You know, some of the political things that have gone in the, on in the community, the educational opportunities that this will provide for our kids for decades to come, along with a plan to position us 30 years from now.
Right.
Do the math on that, you know, as far as how old we all would be, and whose kids would be there. It might be my grandkids. So I look at, it's, it's, it's a large sum of money. It's an investment in the future of our community, and it's also a responsible investment.
So when you looked at the one campus solution, which is that lots are in logistics and the traffic said it couldn't do it, did you also consider, because again, we haven't gone through all the six alternatives, and we'd love to see those, but did you consider the one campus solution on the south campus at BHMS?
We looked at maximizing the assets that we currently have within the district, and I don't, we wouldn't be able to use, with Conant and one middle school at that site, that would not work. So then we'd have to figure out-
Okay. So there wasn't enough real estate to do the whole thing there?
And, and you'd still have that question with the Lhasir building. Because one of the things we didn't highlight with that North Middle School, the south end of that building, sorry, I just keep going north and south here, but the North, the North Middle School, the south end of that building would really have more of a community center feel. If we invested in another pool for our community, we'd have middle schoolers who'd have access to pools, we'd also have senior citizens that would have lock-off capability, where now all of a sudden you've opened up a pool for use during the school day even, because it's more of a community center on the south end of that building.
All of these what-if situations that the board will ask, our community will be asking this plus in spades. So we've got to be able to come up with elevator speeches and very succinct answers on all these alternatives in terms of why we considered one versus another, because we did this exact same thing when we went through the high school.
Right.
Of different alternatives.
And this is the questions that we want to have in the Google Doc. Keep in mind, the scope and design probably spent, you know, I know you put a slide up, probably 30, 40 hours hammering some of these things, so that's why supposed to spending it, you know, now, and we could talk about on the 16th, you know, we could have those questions, and then, you know, we can get the appropriate responses.
And what I'm doing is, I'm not second guessing, what I'm doing is trying to, we've got to be able to take all this and make it so it's very simple to explain to the community.
That's what I'm talking about as a board.
And I do think with the work that we can do between now and the 16th, it's going to provide you, you know, you talk about the elevator speech, it'll be much more concrete at that point for us, because we'll have just a much, much more deeply developed concept.
I just want to say that the committee really appreciated that this really optimized the use of our existing facilities, and particularly about the Lhasir site. So when they were looking at the east-west middle school, not utilizing, I think it was been a lot of community questions about, well, what are you going to do with Lhasir? And we've had lots of dreams, we've had a lot of dreams. But this one really was a concrete plan that made sense to a lot of people, that we could maximize that property, not only for middle school use, but also for community use. And that was a real strength of this plan, that the people on our, the citizens on the committee really appreciated. And for the board, it sort of, you know, simplifies some things, it sort of nails down that IA is staying where it currently is, that we are taking two buildings, Fox Hills, which has been a question mark for a lot of years, we've known that building is deteriorating, needed a tremendous amount of investment. So Fox Hills has been a big, big, big issue for a long time, and as well as Lone Pine. So, you know, it's really has some great solutions to some long-term issues.
Wonderful.
And I think that's what people got excited about, was like, those, they were sort of interested in the instructional strengths of having one big middle school, and being able to have the breadth and depth of kind of programming you could have with that large number of kids in one space. And being able to see how you could break out the cohort so it could make them into learning communities, not feeling so huge. But if the, if the traffic design wasn't going to hold, we just couldn't go there. We know that that's-
But with the middle schools, I mean, that's where we've got to, this will tie in the world language and the music program discussions we've been having for five or six years.
Exactly.
So we've got to see how that all factors into this.
And I think going, and I'm not saying, you know, you can't have 10,000, you know, the scope and design, how was formerly, you know, in terms of people on it, there were people that have the history of the high school, there are people, there are, you know, so people that have, you know, that, you know, don't have any, you know, students in the district anymore, people that are, you know, newer to the community, you know, younger parents, all, I mean, again, it was, it was a good, it was a good subset. We're not saying that it's totally, you know, a representative of what the community may or may not be thinking, we still have to do that. But it was nice, and I got the feedback from that meeting on the 16th, that everyone rallied around this. And again, don't discount, you know, I know some board members were here during November fourth, they did spend between 30 and 40 hours meeting.
Wait, are they meeting, and was, is this the last meeting that you just had of the scope and design committee?
Well, we walked out of it, we weren't exactly sure if it was going to be the last meeting or not. And it was one of those things, like, we need to, again, it's, it's kind of how each meeting went, it was very reflective, walking out of there, it's like, okay, what are the next steps? And I think where we landed on Monday, people were like, we have seven representatives that are elected by, by our community to take our work now and take a deep dive into that, and really make some-
Well, then it's timely for me, I think, to say a huge thank you to the amount of hours that this committee put into it and the work that they did. What was really striking to me in all this was, and sort of the point of me grilling you on this, was they came up with an idea that seemed to mirror the discussion that the board had in late October, when we had our special study session, and there was a number of people that came to watch it. I thought we were leaning toward two middle schools, but clearly not in the place that they've been presented. So to me, it's always comforting when we all get to the same place, and you know, the way you described, we didn't really have a lot of support for this, this, but when we had that aha moment, and everyone sort of embraced it, this feels like it to me, too. So I can sense, I mean, I'm feeling really enthusiastic, because it's, it's great to be able to have come out of a scope and design committee and be able to make one recommendation that everybody can rally behind, that's pretty rare, but great.
And I'll tell you, we talked about it, there were very sweaty moments through many of those meetings, and it wasn't always the most comfortable, when it wasn't the most, you know, and so to see that, and it came together in the 15 minutes, because when something really made sense for our community, I can see it in you right now, Lisa, when you're looking at it, it's like, this makes sense.
And I've had, even though, even though I'm not on scope and design, I've been to the Lhasir site, like, I guess I'll consider it the war room. And, no, I mean, I mean, just even looking around it, you can tell your designs, and I know, yes, getting to Lisa's point, you know, you know, we owe gratitude to everyone who's spent the 30, 40 hours, and also you guys who probably spent 80 to 300 hours putting together designs and getting ready for all these questions that we will ask, and you'll probably be able to answer, because you've probably done a lot of legwork, so I do appreciate it.
So I think we will get a number of people from scope and design who will come to our study session on the 16th. And as we were winding up the official part of the meeting, there were a group that were planning to get together to talk about the advocacy campaign for it. So I think that will happen, you know, is going to start to get involved.
I have another question. About that, Cynthia, but can we talk, can we stay and talk about it after, I just want to keep-
I'm just saying, you respond to what people want to get together.
That's a very long question.
Tina, and then, you know, let's, let's make sure we get whatever questions we need for the 16th.
I mean, I have a bunch of questions about that, too, and things to talk about, but I just want to be conscious that we're directing what, whatever needs to go here, here, before we make any-
When we were good together, so they do want to come up to the 16th.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I also want to say we're very fortunate this past Monday that Pat Watson was able to join us at that scope and design meeting. We introduced him at the beginning, he was purely there to listen, and then said a few words at the end. So I just wanted to make that point, too.
Oh, that's really a good point, too, Tina. I'm sorry, somebody asked me if he was going to be involved in this, and I pointed out that he's not technically employed with our district yet, so really nice for him to be there. And certainly, when he's officially part of our district, he'll take more of a leadership role in it.
And I think, even before that, when we went on the site visit with Brian for the superintendent search, when he was a finalist, you know, I know one of my, you know, our colleagues say, well, what was the problem? I think he witnessed the problem when he was in the buildings. He was shocked coming in from another district.
He did mention that.
Looking, he mentioned that during the interview, he mentioned a lot of times, mentioned each building we were in, you know, that he was shocked, you know, at kind of looking at it, Bloomfield Hills, he would expected our buildings to be in better shape, you know, physically. So, you know, that's part of the problem that we're trying to solve.
Yeah, just thank you so much, and to everyone on the design committee, I think they should get little chocolate or card or something.
T-shirts.
T-shirts, that's good. I also just wanted to put forward, before you guys leave, if it's, so everyone can maybe agree that we, I feel very strongly we should videotape the session on the 16th, there's just going to be a lot of Q and A.
We agree, we, I talked-
Okay.
I want to go a step further and say that if we're, any meeting that's devoted primarily to-
To this, yes.
Should be videotaped.
Yep.
It'll be in this room, we planned it.
Okay, great. Super.
As you guys are working on the business case, if you can, make a list of all of the issues that are unresolved at this point, starting with the academic ones, and then moving to the physical plant ones, and showing how the different, the six alternatives resolve those issues, and that this plan that you've got right here is the best, that check, check- That check, 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 you know, that it's, it's, it's addressed all those issues.
I'd rather, I, yeah, it is hard.
No, that's, no, no, that's, that's the issue.
There's a lot to do if you were on the sixteenth and thirtieth, I'd rather that they focus than work on that than options that we're not familiar with.
Yeah, we can, we can probably do that, and it can be short.
Someone's got to work on that.
Okay, someone else, maybe them, but, but if they're scrambling time wise, which I can see that it would be, it's better used.
I don't see any reason that they need to be scrambled. The, the only, the only thing I'm saying is, is that the scope and design, you know, the chair, chair's not here, and the two others are here as board, you know, so this is, it's not like they're the chairs of the scope and design, so some of these questions can be addressed.
I'm talking to the room, not necessarily things, Jen.
Okay, well, you're pointing to, all right, usually facing, so it's better to face us.
All right, so, getting to where Jen was saying, Andy, Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You go home, you could stay, not stay, go home, whatever.
Yeah, and, and really great work, great work from the entire committee and from both you, it's, uh, I'm really excited, it is, it's a, it's a really good plan.
We can feel the enthusiasm and how everyone came together and, and it's just also when even, these are conceptual, it's very logical. And you did convey a lot of the things that, um, that like seventy-five percent of the travel time.
And that was just a guess.
Exactly, so, yeah, well, I'm just saying.
The union rough behind you who's writing it.
Union roughs writing stuff.
Phil's going to hold me to it, I got you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Very much appreciated.
It's been a long day.
Happy holidays.
All right, so while it was still, before we go in German, so any questions, discussion points?
Well, I, I think before we adjourn, uh, I, I have a couple of concerns about the website, timing and timing of the, of any potential advocacy groups. Just so I'm clear on it, um, I, I think it's hard to advocate for something before we've approved it. It makes it really confusing to advocate for something when you don't know what you're advocating.
I, I don't, listen, I wasn't at scope and design, I don't, I, I think this is apparent, I think this is apparent, Cynthia, I'm going to comment.
So, I, I think what, what, what you're hearing is that there are citizens who are on the committee, who are excited, who want to share with the board the support, that we have some community support to go forward, so that's how, and then, in hopes that if the board does make that decision on January thirtieth, that they are ready to go, because it's going to be a short time. So, they're, they're, they're trying to gear up to show the community support to the board and then be prepared so that we know when, when we make a decision on the thirtieth, if we are ready, if we are going to go forward, that we have a core group who are ready to help.
Well, I, just to save them work, because it's going to be a lot of work, and I know more than anybody know that, uh, maybe we can, you know, gauging the opinion of, of, well, three of us were already in the committee, so that, and, and the four remaining, I'm, I'm, uh, inclined to take a recommendation of a committee that worked this hard and, uh, this is where I'd be leaning anyway. I think to save them time and energy in terms of advocating and so that they feel like their time is well spent and directed where it's needed most, maybe they can make the assumption that we're going to go with this. And, and just to give them a chance to focus, the other reason is, um, I, I think it, clarity of message is very important going forward into the greater community. And to be able to rally behind a concrete plan, um, maybe we'll start them off on the right foot. I'm, I'm giving some feedback that they're a little confused right now and it's not boding well for them hammering home a message.
So, so just simply from a logistical standpoint, so that everyone can feel like we all have the same knowledge base, does it make sense to have the organizational people and that meeting to be also on the sixteenth where?
They are totally, they are, they are separate from us and from the board, they are an independent group.
I mean, that's going to be my next point.
They're going to rent a space and call and organize themselves.
I think, I think what's getting confusing, and I've heard the feedback, is that people, people on, on that, or at least people who are not kind of, there, there are some parents that think, you know, this group that's forming is like board and admins, you know, and administration sanctioned. Because the people have texted or asked me, they're saying, shouldn't Brian and Andy be at this meeting presenting? And the answer is no, but they don't know why, they're like, well, why? Shouldn't, shouldn't, they think this presentation should be the presentation on this date, I've heard, the fourteenth. And I'm like, it's, it's different, so there's just some confusion with this parent run only group, respective of what we're doing. You know, but I'm just saying.
But the parent run, that group though, will need to know everything that's talked about on the sixteenth, right? So how can we just merge that somehow, so that people, it, it, I think it's just, uh, it's hard for people to spend two days apart at two different long meetings.
So, but, but they're different conversations.
Right, but the other reason is, uh.
There's legal conversations.
Right.
Yeah.
Which, fine, I mean, it doesn't have to be merged into the exact same meeting, although I do think that if they're interested in being a part of any advocacy group, that they're going to obviously have to come to all the, uh, study sessions that talk about this. But, um, I think the, the, the perception is that if it's, this group, advocacy group is born out of the scope and design committee, which was hand-selected, that somehow it's not open to all parents, it, when the reverse is true, I mean, they want as many parents as possible.
All I can tell you is, at that meeting, when the group separated from the official meeting, because there has to be an independent conversation, but it was clearly stated, please find anybody who you would think would like to be part of this. And encourage to bring in other people to be part of it. So it was very clear that this is not an exclusive thing.
But even the, like you just said, for legal purposes and for separation purposes, that it came directly from a group that started in a hand-selected and that it was a, a district-run meeting where they splintered off. I mean, if we're going to separate, they should really be separate.
So, it wasn't anybody, nobody who was an employee of the district, um, addressed this issue. So Mark has, was very much involved in organizing for the bond issue that passed for the high school. We also had a couple other, like Barb Kaufman, um, Jan Frank, other people who've been very involved in advocacy and other campaigns, who spoke to those issues and, um, talked about, you know, we needing, if there was going to be a campaign, money that would need to be raised, communications, these are the things that they would need to organize and need to find a large group of people to help to make the work be done. And so, yes, there was a very definitely not about a few people, it was very definitely, we need as many people as we can get. And so they, and so they, they, they want to, they will have their own meetings, um, but I think that they will want to come and be sure that, you know, come to public comment and make, make statements.
But they're starting out with the knowledge base that the rest of the public doesn't have, so it, it does kind of look like, uh, not as ground floor welcoming to everybody as it could, ju- just putting that out there. Um, and, uh, it's being, you know, I know we don't all use social media, but it, it's used. And so the comments that I've been seeing reflect a lot of that. So it's not like I'm pulling it, I mean, I wasn't even there, so I'm only knowing, uh, basing this on what I know from reading things and, and hearing comments that are coming back. And I, I just don't want to start out with already negativity.
Again, those organizations are totally separate from this organization.
Yeah, no, and, and we, and we got to make, and, and I know the intention was, it's just that I've gotten a lot of personal questions asking me as if it was sanctioned by the board, so, you know, saying, why isn't Brian and Andy presenting? You know, some, one parent asked me is, why do I have to bring, I was told I have to bring money, I'm just saying. So I, I just want to make sure if it is separate, we, we have an omens from, from a board.
Well, legally, I mean, what was discussed at scope and design is legally, because the seven of us are not paid by the district, we, we are all allowed to be on the advocacy group.
There are, there are eight people in the district that are allowed, the seven board members plus the superintendent, everyone else has to be information alone.
Um, but it was also sort of discussed that we don't lead it, and I don't know if that's a legal thing or an optics thing.
No, it's not a legal thing, it's an optics.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, because we had, um, I think we could take some good nuggets about the F and I, um, work with the community and the way they brought it down to three options, and then those options were, uh, shared with the community and then one option was selected. Uh, one option was selected, so like, if we actually looked at the process that, um, F and I went through in order to really, I mean, they were specifically hired because they were experts in engaging the community. And so we could really harvest some of that process perhaps, um, so that we can walk down that path to a large extent. And then I think that the idea isn't on any, you know, the idea of the advocacy group isn't necessarily on, because we haven't finished this design. It's the fact that whatever that design is, we really need to do work, um, on our non-high school buildings and, um, instructional environments, and that's really important, and that can be in parallel, you know, like the, what the actual outcome is and that process and how it's engaged in the community, as opposed to having, um, you know, parents and, and residents who really want to, as we have heard, that we really, they want to have some focus on our non-high school buildings and, and make those building every, as wonderful as our high school building. So, um, I think we, we don't want, I think those are really very separate things and we don't want to commingle them because they're, the way it worked last time was that also it was very separate.
Yeah, but I don't mean to cut you guys out, I just want to respond really quickly that we now are dealing with social media, that wasn't really a factor nine years ago, it's huge. So I'm reading posts on social media saying things like, come to a meeting and, um, now that we have a plan that we're going to go with in May of two thousand twenty. And I'm going, what?
Well, we don't have a plan, it, because.
No, we don't, but, but, but these are the people who are going to be steering an advocacy group.
Because the scope and designer make a recommendation, okay.
But you see what I'm saying?
And it's only a recommendation, right? We know that, we know how task force and committees work, those are only recommendations we haven't approved.
We know, but we know that, but, but thousands of people don't know that.
Parents don't know if they're reading social media and says, oh, they made a decision, I'm not involved in it, come to this meeting on the fourth. And I'm saying it gets misconstrued.
Yeah, and then they go, oh, I didn't know, say, I didn't, I didn't get to have any, I was no part of this hand pick committee, and I'm not going in, and then you get the negative connotation before you even get out of the gate, you know.
I'm not saying it was intended to be that, but that's what it was.
Well, I think maybe that, um, one of the things F and I did do, and maybe this is the point that this needs to be done, is that there were, I mean, we did have different option, right? There was the option of the one high school, the option of the two high schools at different places, you know, like, there were these options and they were shared and we got feedback, the same way we did with the master planning, when we decided which, which, um, which, which properties to keep and which ones that we could repurpose and which we could sell, right? I think that, that, that messaging at this point, there's one, one, because I was hearing pretty strong feedback, they didn't want only one middle school, which, so I'm not surprised to hear that the scope and design had the, the same feedback, right? But that, the process that people are going through, that there were different options, they were discussed and, and people have a chance to comment on them, just as we did with our superintendent search. I think we, we are at a point where we could do that now still.
With the website.
Yeah, with the website and, and, and those things could be shared and people could mention it. And, and maybe the scope and design committee could be also providing that feedback. Well, the reason that, you know, one didn't, isn't going to work is this, is this, I mean, but I think it has to be some actual interaction.
Because one of the things we talked about, I was talking about it with Tina, similar to superintendent search.
Do you need to mic, please?
Sorry, well, um, one of the things we talked about, um, you know, I was talking about with Tina, you know, if we start, if we have this website and we, you know, sort of take in, you know, this presentation as a recommendation, but similar to the superintendent search, we have an area where people can provide feedback and we can get community feedback on, you know, like presenting this and we can get those type of questions or comments and it can come in to all the board and we can start reading that in the next several weeks, hour.
Let Cynthia, and then you next hour, because she had her hand up and I cut her off.
Just two things, one is, um, an interesting piece that I think sort of fed the interest on Monday night was, um, I don't know if everybody else had heard, that Birmingham has just decided to put a major bond issue on the ballot in March. Uh, they just made that decision and it's like a hundred and ninety million, so, I mean, I think that sort of gave people the courage to know that our next door, you know, community, um, is, is doing something that's in the same ballpark. So I think that would, that influenced some of the conversation, that we're, we're staying, we're, we're staying competitive. Um, and the other thing was, I'm, just to be sure everybody is aware, if we decided to go ahead with this, that the design firm that we would be working with has a marketing team, they do manage and, and provide a lot of, of support to the district as you figure out the steps of how do you get your, your community on board, so that will include a social media campaign.
It sounds like the going in assumption is that the analysis is going to be done over the next forty days and then we'll make a decision at the end of January. And that decision sounds like it's, uh, it's going to make two decisions right now. One is that we go with this concept that we are hearing about, or some manipulation of it, and we go to the bond. And I would suggest that we separate those two decisions. When we did the strategic plan, we came up with a strategic plan concept and then we went to the community and gave them a month or two to soak on it. Now, strategic plan's a lot easier, because we just had to get the feedback, but we made the decision on the final strategic plan. Here you're getting forty thousand voters, the option to say yes or no. So I have no problem if we go and, and target the end of January for deciding option number three or whatever it is that we go with, with all the detail that we, and all the questions and the Google Doc, you know, resolutions, uh, or the resolution of all the issues that we put on the Google Doc. But then, that's where the community involvement comes, with talking to the community, finding out what they think, doing those surveys, and then giving ourselves the option of tweaking again option three and three A or three B based upon the feedback. Also, everyone understands this is a millage increase, this is a tax increase, which quite frankly, we did not have in the high school, it was tax neutral. So I'd say we split those decisions and at the end of January, we target ourselves to decide on option three. But then put into the future, based upon an additional community involvement timeline of when we actually decide to go to the bond. And we go to the bond once not only the board, as of the end of January, has agreed to option three, but the community has bought into option three. You don't want the ballot to be the community survey. What do you think, guys? Approve, reject? No, we want to go ahead of time and know that when we put it on the ballot, it's going to be passed.
Those are a really good point.
So I'd say, split those two decisions and I'll be very comfortable.
Yeah, those are really good points.
And, and just to Lisa's previous point, if there's an advocacy meeting on the fourteenth, because I know an invitation's been sent out, we, we should take pains to make sure that invitation goes far and wide, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, we, I really would like to come back to that, because I'm not sure we're done with that discussion. I, I do agree though, Howard, to separate the two, I, I like this plan a lot, I'm not at all sold on the May date, but I could, maybe could be, I have no amount of information necessarily to be able to make a decision on the date, that we're ready for it, but I do like the plan. Okay, the, the, um, January fourteenth, um, I, I mean, my understanding again, and it's limited, because I wasn't part of that meeting nor part of the, even the committee that, you know, preceded the splintering off of this group. But, uh, January fourteenth, there's a kindergarten orientation through the district, so if the aim of this group is to attract young parents that are going to be able to, I mean, you're already conflicting with a major district event, not your, but their. Uh, and I think before they set dates and before, I mean, they should always check district calendars to make sure for their own benefit.
So I wasn't in that conversation, so I, I would, I would just say that, that it's not a board-directed thing.
Right, I know.
But the fact of the matter is, when and if we put something on the ballot, whatever community, community group is created independently to do advocacy for the, for that, that, that question, um, you don't have to be there at the first meeting, you can come any, anywhere along the line that people will be willing to volunteer and help out, it's, it's always going to be open to ask more people to be welcome, to be part of whatever the group is. If you miss one meeting, the world is not, you know, it's, it's not like you missed anything.
I think the message is that that meeting, whatever that meeting is, has nothing to do with the seven of us.
Right.
Right.
And has nothing to do with administration, so.
No, but.
We have not sanctioned.
You do a lot of damage by making a not good first impression.
But I again, this. No, no, I know, but but again, I I'm, you know.
So the I think the concern is if there's too many question marks when this first advocacy group meeting occurs, will will we leave a bad impression? Will we? Will it just not get off to a robust start or are we just wasting or are we just wasting people's time?
Why are we just talking about this, guys?
Because of the rumor mill and because of the fires that we end up having to put out when he said, she said, they said, they said, right? I mean, that's that's.
If you're hearing rumor mills, go out and.
Well, I I don't know. I don't have time for that.
I've gotten 15 emails and 13 texts asking me about this meeting that I had no knowledge about. And it's coming to me because it's it's interpreted by people, not right or wrong, that it's been directed by the board and administration. That's 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 why we're involved.
So.
And we're not involved in this.
All right. I just thought of something else related to what the just the statement I said earlier. After we make a decision, hopefully at the end of January on a plan, we have to integrate this into Pat Watson's timeline. Because Pat Watson is the big, the superintendent is the spokesman of the district in general. I mean, the president also, but in general, it's the superintendent. I'm envisioning that he does a road show and he goes around with this plan and explains and is the front person to explain this to the community, both parents and the 80% that are not parents in the community. So that might take, you know, one, it has to be, we have to develop a PowerPoint for him and then he has to actually get go on the road and schedule all these meetings. Now, we have to integrate that into his 90 day plan. He's trying to learn who our district is and the community is trying to learn who Pat Watson is. So we've got these two things happening at the same time. So we've got to be very careful and think about the timeline of not just what these guys are doing, develop the the infrastructure piece of it and the learning and and what Todd has to do in terms of why this is a great thing for for instruction. But we need to work with Mr. Watson in terms of how he's actually with and Shira, in terms of how he's going to sell this plan to the community.
Well, in that's where I think we need more information and Tina said she was gonna work on pros and cons of all the different dates for us. So we have to be open minded and hear that. I like there being on the 30th, two separate votes. Do you like this plan? Do you like this date separating them? I think that's good.
We don't have to do anything on a date by then.
Well, that's what we if we're not gonna go.
We could vote as a board.
We do if it's gonna be May because if not, then we do have to.
If it's gonna be May, yes.
So we have to we have to.
We'd be a no vote at this point on that.
Right, but you don't know because you but you you're gonna get a lot more information, so you might change.
I would say that Howard's point of.
We're not gonna have the road show. We're not gonna have a lot of.
But but I think that Howard's point about our new superintendent is really important though because we're kind of interestingly enough, we're almost at a very similar place when we had our last superintendent and that was on the high school, right? Well, actually.
The first time.
No, he wasn't a part of that. He was a part on the last one.
Right?
No, he was part of the last one.
No, he was part of, he we went to the ballot right after we hired Ron.
Correct.
For the third time.
Not for for the second time.
Second thing.
But.
But he wasn't really a part of building that. He was only, well, it's very similar, right? Yeah, he only had one month and but then then he was doing a lot of outreach and listening tour and then on the third one, he did it, right?
Two years he spent doing that.
Well, so we, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, it's when a new superintendent comes in, a new leader comes in.
Yay.
Right.
You know what? I I just think this is a premature discussion.
Be able to just.
Brian has a lot of data to give us. Tina's got data. We can't really talk about good or bad dates till we get that information.
Not be not be focused just on one thing. That's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing with Howard is that we don't want our new superintendent only focused on one thing that he's coming in.
That's definitely a con. I get it, but there's also other reasons to do it in May.
Quite frankly, his primary focus should be on academics and achievement, not on construction and listening.
And listening and having an interaction and doing that work, that's really important.
Yep, couple couple things as we as we close. So, yes, this is great discussion. We're gonna have a Google Doc with questions and Brian and Andy and everyone, people of scope and design will have answers. We're gonna have another meeting on the 16th. Whatever happens with the advocacy group, it's not sanctioned by the board or administration. I'll work with Tina, you know, probably on a communication that's gonna go out, you know, just regarding this and the website and, you know, maybe open it up for a comment section.
Can I make one more suggestion before we adjourn for tonight? Because I I really do feel like this is of the essence. We need, I I believe, some kind of subcommittee made up of one, two, three board members that will help with the communication piece of this because I I think we need to be proactive and have facts out so when social media misconceptions start to brew, there is a place people can go for, you know, a reliable, accurate set of facts, which they don't have now.
But why do we need that?
It's not ready though.
But I don't see why we'd need that. Wouldn't I just our president do that? He's the spokesperson. Why wouldn't he just be like he just did now saying?
I'm talking about the developing the content of what's gonna go on that site.
Listen, I'm happy.
On the district end.
I'm happy to collaborate with, you know, with fellow board members and working with.
What's the content of it?
Transmitting and.
Right, but we need to be part of the content part, I think. Because otherwise, if we're not part of weighing in on the content, if we don't have a committee that that's authorized, then we have to wait till the next board meeting and weeks go by before we can clear up rumors.
I mean, when we did the high school, we had a subcommittee that was created, a ad hoc committee.
That's fine. I could commit a subcommittee to work on a communication plan.
If we can make any own committee, we want it, that's all.
Yeah, I I just think.
I mean, ideally, we really have a Q and A committee, which is just I I don't, I can't wrap my head around who would have the time to do that, whether, you know.
Why don't we just shoot the questions to Paul and Paul will respond?
I mean.
So can I suggest that the the design firm that we work with, if we decide to go forward, we can understand what the services are in terms of, because they have communications plans. So maybe we could learn more about what it is that they would provide to us so we could understand what our role is versus what their role is.
We've never met that consultant. At least some of us have never met that consulting.
I think what I'm in the interim.
But that's what those firms do. When you when you put a bond out, that's part of the what you what their fees pay for. You know, we are paying them a fee to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think they'll be valuable.
So let's find out what it is that they do for us before we get too far down.
The only thing I'm concerned about in the immediate, I'm worried about this month plus where all these rumors are brewing and we haven't really countered them with any accurate or Q and A or accurate information. By the time we get organized, we're late in the game and I think we need to be more proactive.
That's fine. I could, again, I will work with Tina and maybe some colleagues on the board on this website, open communication. That's really gonna relay what was presented to us tonight to the community and sort of like this is, you know, scope and design has presented this. So again, I'll I'll work with Tina, admin, maybe some colleagues here on the board that want to, you know, volunteer their time so we make sure we're ahead of it for our greater.
Can we have this PowerPoint put on the agenda, not a novice, not only novice, so we can see it, but also the community can see it?
Plan to put it on.
Because it's not, it's not there right now.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, all right. Meeting adjourned?
Good.
Yes.
Thank you.